All right, I'd like to call the order, the September 9th, 2024 Maui Terrace Planning Commission Meeting. The order, would you please take the roll?
Chair Batista?
Here.
Commissioner Thompson?
Here.
Commissioner Betcher?
Here.
Commissioner Landis?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Commissioner Stenson?
President.
Vice Chair Harrison has requested an absence from tonight's meeting.
Would anybody like to make a motion to excuse Commissioner Harrison?
I make a motion that we excuse Vice Chair Harrison?
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to excuse Commissioner Harrison, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Closed? Hearing none of that motion carries? All right, item number three, approval of the August 26th, 2024 meeting minutes. Anybody have any changes or corrections to those? Not hearing or seeing anything, so we'll go ahead and declare those accepted as presented. Item number four, public comment. I guess let the record show, there is no public in attendance tonight. Do we have anybody online who has signed up in advance to make public comment?
No one online has signed up in advance, we did receive a written comment and it's been distributed to you.
All right. Thank you. Item number five, Vision 2040-
Sorry, can we get, it's kind of a lengthy comment, could we get a, and this is my first time seeing it, could we get a summary of what this says?
Well, is this comment in relation to what we're going to be talking about tonight?
Yes, well, it's a comment letter on the draft plan that got circulated for agency and public comment, so this is just a letter speaking to each of the elements and policies.
Okay. Commissioner Betcher is not kidding, this thing is two, four, five pages long.
I mean, I'd like to read, when we get comments like this, I'd kind of like to read them, but if there's a quick summary, like is it generally supportive, is there anything we're missing? Do we have an idea of what that is?
Yeah, we just got it today, so we would like to get it to you beforehand, but just getting it to you as soon as we can, in time for our next meeting, for you to take a look at. I think generally in support, in a couple of things, there's use caution kind of language in like how we use our policies and such, but I think for the most part, there's nothing in there, after I perused it, that it stands out as anything that's overly negative, I guess, if you will.
Great.
All right, item number five, Vision 2040 Draft Comprehensive Plan Review.
All right, good evening Chair Batista, members of the Planning Commission, Jonathan Morales, Senior Planner at the City of Maui Terrace, and I'm here with Kristi Osborne, CED Director, and also have on the line Emily Larson from OTAC, who's joining and helping present today. Mandy Roberts will be joining a little bit later as well from OTAC. So, as you know, we were supposed to have a public hearing today. Based on the discussion at our last meeting, we felt it was a good opportunity to sort of bring back the land use map discussion, and try to get some clear direction from the Planning Commission on that before we go into a public hearing. So, the public hearing has been pushed back to September 23rd. So, for today, we, let me share my screen. Sorry. So today, we're going to have a follow-up discussion on the land use map, and we have two options to present today, and then we'll have a summary of draft EIS comments that we received, and then a review of next steps. So, based on Planning Commission input, we felt that it was a good idea to bring forward two options for our land use map proposal. And so the difference between these are, as you know, there were a few focused areas that were highlighted at our last meeting with Planning Commission. So, option A has a more residential mixed use at 44th and 228th Street Southwest versus option B, which has more residential mixed use at 44th and 214th, including the Mount Zion Lutheran Church. For St. Pius, for option A, that is proposed to be a land use designation of residential mixed use versus an option B, that is residential four. Town center, just south of 236th Street Southwest, we have, that south part, in option A, is residential two versus an option B, that is residential three. So what it looks like on the map, there's four highlighted areas for each land use map, as you can see. Sorry, before I go forward, I did want to let you know that we did distribute a future land use map designations-
Thank you.
-handout, which provides some more information on what the previous land use designation was, and then the purpose of each land use designation, as well as building heights for some of them. So... Emily, I don't know if you wanted to take it from here? Happy to-
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, perfect. Hello, I'm Emily Larson from OTAC, and I apologize, I'm having technical difficulties with my camera. Yeah, as we can see in kind of the northeast quadrant there, that is the northern section along 45th Avenue West. That is the change that Jonathan mentioned of kind of shifting a couple of parcels around from a residential four to a mixed, sorry, residential three into a residential mixed use zone, primarily that larger parcel on the west side of 44th, and as well as in option B, some parcels on the east side of 44th Avenue West in an attempt to kind of mirror the depth of the mixed use parcels, so those purple parcels, kind of matching it with those, the parcels existing on the north hand side of that cross street there, to kind of make a nice little round, even corridor. In the southern portion of 45th Avenue, this is the portion of, this is where the QFC is, and the biggest difference here is whereas in option A, which was the map previously provided, it included several cul-de-sacs surrounding the commercial areas as the residential mixed use. But with the option B, some of these have been reduced down to a residential two designation. This is primarily due to kind of the size of the cul-de-sacs, the likelihood that they'll get redeveloped in, and the likelihood that they'll get redeveloped, as well as the size of the lots, being maybe not being as conducive to a mixed use development as some of the larger parcels surrounding it.
Would you guys like to go through all of the changes and then go back and make decisions on each quadrant? Or would you like to go through each quadrant and discuss, make some decisions, and then go to the next? What's your preference?
Could we have a brief comment period and then have a broader discussion at the end? Is it possible to do both?
Sure.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, one thing I noticed, and thanks for sending this around, because I think it was good to see. Two questions I had, one is the purple kind of in mid 44th, the Sorelli's, we didn't downzone Sorelli's, right? And-
Correct.
Yeah.
That was kind of a fix from the previous map, I think that was an error in the previous map that was brought to you of it not being included. So with both of these options, we went ahead and fixed that, so that Sorelli's, it's actually two parcels on the west hand side of 44th is Sorelli's. And then, in order to kind of make it a nice little neighborhood center, we expanded the residential mixed use zone to a few parcels south of Sorelli's to round out that block, as well as kind of mirroring the same width of Sorelli's and those additional parcels on the east side of 44th in order to kind of create a good mirror effect in that area.
Okay, great, and then I just want to point out something, and I kind of want to discuss it later, because I noticed it, and I'm curious what everyone else thinks. We've got yellow touching purple, and I'm curious how we handle that.
Yeah, that's a good question. I think the way to handle that is sort of through design standards and dimensional standard requirements. So, right now, we're just focusing on the land use, but as we move forward with this process, we'll be updating our development code and zoning code to ensure that these are implemented correctly.
All right, yeah, I think maybe a question we want to ask tonight is if we expand others, like I don't know if we even have capacity to do that, or if we handle that through design standards. I think there is a question I have of like where, what kind of adjacencies are okay, and what kind of adjacencies do we handle through design standards?
Yeah, I would say residential mixed use is meant to be a compatible land use with other residential types, so I think they are compatible.
Yeah, and I would say we, you know, you find this all over where you have single-family zoning touching these kind of neighborhood commercial nodes, if you will, in these areas. So I don't, you know, if we had a much more aggressive commercial zone, like a general commercial or something that was more robust, I think it would be a little bit harder, but here, we're talking, you know, kind of lower scale mixed use, and we're not talking single, you know, straight, single-family adjacent to it. So, I mean, that's kind of something to consider too. I don't know that it's that uncompatible with each other.
Cool, thanks.
And on that note as well, we do have a slide a little after, a little later in the presentation that is a great talking point to talk about the maximum heights as part of some of the dimensional standards that would be included in the mixed use residential zone. So we can, that might be a good opportunity to kind of dive into that a little bit deeper as well.
So, I had a quick, you know, question, you know, in option B, you know, at 212th and 44th, you know, we've got that corner, and this is on the west side, you know, we've got that corner that's designated as mixed, but we're, then we're kind of leapfrogging a very large parcel to then have another parcel of, you know, mixed use development. And I understand, you know, we had this discussion in the past, you know, about capacity, but to me, it still makes sense to zone that as mixed as well to try and get more activation on 44th Avenue, knowing the fact that this isn't an empty lot, it's currently developed and it's probably going to stay developed for a while. It's possible, surrounding redevelopment might trigger something quicker than normal, but in reality, would it be better to get the zoning change on the books now, even though we know we're not going to see, you know, something in the near term that's going to really impact our capacity abilities? I think it's a missed opportunity to kind of have that, you know, big street frontage there that's not going to be mixed use, but we're sort of bookending it by mixed use. So, is that, is that possible? I know further in the presentation, because I was looking at this earlier, you know, we're sort of talking about how do, where do we want this mixed use? You know, do we just want it, you know, like on the main street? Are we talking about the whole parcel? I think this would be a case where it would make sense, you know, it doesn't have to be the whole parcel, it can be, you know, the part of the development on that parcel that is fronting 44th, whereas, you know, it'd be more dense residential only, you know, buildings that are further, you know, further set back. Doesn't really make any sense here to have commercial, you know, on streets that don't exist now, but may exist in the future if this, you know, kind of gets split.
Yeah, I agree. If you guys go with option B, I think it makes sense to do that, that budding orange piece of property purple as well. So, we'll come back to that, I made a note on that-
Okay.
Chair Batista, but yeah, I think if you guys want to end up doing B, I think that makes perfectly good sense. So... We want to run through.
All right. Moving on to the northwest quadrant, not much is different between the option A or option B in this area. Primarily, kind of those, a section along 56th Avenue decreased in the land use designation from a residential mixed use down to a residential four zoning category.
For context, this is the St. Pius site?
Yeah, go ahead.
What is the current zoning designation of that site? What's like the, how does that translate into our new zones? Is it an R3 or an R4?
I believe it's residential mixed use, multifamily.
For St. Pius currently?
Yeah.
I think it's single-family.
I think it's, I think it's, it's currently, it's currently zoned as multifamily, but I don't remember whether it was three or four stories.
For St. Pius?
Yeah.
I'll be right back, I don't think so.
And then, my other question was, did we accidentally downzone Amorn Thai? Or is that still one of the town center zones?
That, I believe, is still a town center zone.
Cool.
It's just hard to see where the streets are-
Yeah.
On this map, you know, it's like-
I'm having trouble myself.
What is the label? So tiny.
And I do have the zoning, the current zoning map currently up, those portions that we're showing different zoning for option A and option B, that current zoning is medium density, multi-household, which per the new land use designations, is actually that residential four designation.
Okay.
That is the new-
Yeah. I know there's something weird in the code about like north of a certain street, it's four stories, and south of the certain street is three stories. I don't remember exactly where that designation is or what that is here.
So I stand corrected, it's medium density, multifamily, so it's essentially kind of low, lower scale, currently apartment, kind of traditional, you know, what we've developed in the past here in town, right?
Right. Okay.
I think the same comment that I had in the previous quadrant kind of applies for St. Pius. And I'll just say St. Pius, but I'm referring to the whole, this whole little circle here, not just, they just happen to be the largest parcel. I really think, you know, mixed use, definitely on 56th, on 220th, but I don't necessarily see mixed use as being, I don't, I don't want to say it won't work, but, you know, on 58th, since that far north, there really wouldn't be much more commercial on 58th. I don't know if we would have to say, you know, it needs to necessarily be mixed use on the 58th facing portion of these, of these parcels, except when you get up to 220th. And so, if capacity again is the issue, you know, for, we're saying yes to having like ground floor activation in businesses on 220th and 56th only, any potential future roads or streets are created if, you know, more development were to happen here, then, again, those could just be, you know, residential as, as your setback from, you know, from the street. I don't know how other people feel about that, because I, to me, again, it kind of sees, you know, we're having to choose between A or B with obviously the capacity concern in mind. But again, I look at, okay, capacity, especially when it comes to, you know, are we overbuilding like commercial area? You know, if it's just focused on, you know, the main streets that currently exist, and the fact that, again, with like the Northern Lights parcel, we're not going to probably see, read, unless the worst happens with the archdiocese and the decisions that they're making, we're probably not going to see the entire parcel here being redeveloped. There might be a small chunk that gets redeveloped, but not, not the whole thing. We've got to remember, there's a school, a church, and a parking lot here that they're going to want to keep. So, you know, there's some small pockets that could happen, but I don't see wholesale redevelopment of this parcel in the near term, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they could take a look at the parts of the parcel that are fronting the 56th especially, and say, there is opportunity there for not only redevelopment, but then maybe helps put a little bit of money back into their coffers to help them preserve what they have, because there's the threat of closure. Not, and they don't want to close it, it's-
Right.
They're higher ups that are trying to close it, so.
Right.
So I guess my, my only question is, so, I'm very, so if we're making an assumption that there's a transit station going in at 220th at some point, why wouldn't there be higher density right on the other side of I-5 also? And kind of extending this out around that park?
Are you talking about rezoning the north side of the park to purple?
Yes, exactly.
I want to have an extended discussion about this site and this particular node, actually more about this particular node, because I think it ties into some other things that I think we need to think about in the comp plan and going forward, but maybe like we can come back to that.
For clarification, are you talking about Jack Long Park?
Yeah, Jack Long.
Water tower.
Yeah, yeah, the water tower.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Oh, where the water tower is.
Because I'm just looking at this, and I, I'm just thinking like, if I were planning with Monopoly or Legos, this doesn't make sense at all.
No.
Either one of these.
I agree. We've had discussions in the past too about-
Why would you come all the way to 56, you know, all the way to 56 to even have higher density? You should have higher density as fast as someone gets off the freeway.
Right, and I think that park needs some love, like it's currently not allowed to have anything built around it. So I think we should, I think these are all really, like, I, I'm glad, and so thank you for delaying the public hearing, because like we saw the, the maps, and like I think now we're getting into the parcel by parcel things. But I do want to have sort of a bigger discussion about this site and kind of how we're handling things, and what-
I mean, if we're assuming that someday in the future, that all of this will be higher density of traffic from potentially a transit station, then we should probably assume, at least going the same distance we are west, we should be looking east.
Originally, I think that before we, there was the capacity concern, those original draft maps, that's, that's one of the things that we had on the map, because we were talking about trying to create a node on 220th up here with, with that assumption.
Because we, we also have to remember, this is our only north-south on-ramp offering.
Yeah.
You know, like focus, you know, what's happening down on, you know, 236th, that, we only have one-
Yeah, it's a half diamond.
Northbound, yeah, it's a half diamond, and that's a full diamond. And so to, you know, right now, the way I'm looking at this, there's far more density happening around 220th than-
I mean, if I was, if I were sound transit, I would have built it at 220th, but here we are.
Yeah.
So, like, I think, you know, there's some, there's some discussion about the vision happening with that neighborhood. I think the sort of, you know, the two freeway exits and like what happens between them, I think is something we need to talk about in the future as well, but-
And I can just probably say that in option A, the assumption that the Catholic Church may prefer having a mixed use development so that they could build, I don't know, something like low-income housing that is subsidized easier through a mixed use zone than through a lower use zone actually makes more sense to me, because that tends to be what they're, what they will be looking to do when they do sell off some of this land in the future.
Right, but I think there's also a risk of that, in that, you know, it's sort of a very large parcel, and if the only thing that goes there in that neighborhood node is like 800, you know, permanent supportive housing units, and the town homeless shelter, and things like that, like, you know, and they've sort of done that by right, right? There hasn't been a discussion with the city. Like, you know, they need to provide, you know, they, they want to provide services, we want services, but I think we need like, and it's not very convenient to transit either, so like are we creating like the bad neighborhood far away from the train station? Like, I think there are some concerns that I have, that I, I, this is why I want to discuss through it more, because I think there's some ways we can handle that, sort of like creatively, that also makes the city like, you know, a partner in that, as opposed to just kind of allowing it by right. Because I think, you know, if we're talking about the integration of these kind of things, like, that's something we should be looking at.
So if they were to come, we want to build this, and it requires a change in zoning, and the parcel is large enough. Would that be possible? So like if we were to choose B, and they said, hey, this is only financially feasible with B?
Then they would need to do a land use map amendment that would go through Planning Commission for recommendation and to council. So, I appreciate that we're willing and dealing, but we're not really willing and dealing. So remember, we got to treat everybody exactly the same. And that, and that's the Catholic Church, or Grandma and Grandpa, or your best buddy. So, when we put things in, we have to have equity across the board. So, the reason that the St. Pius property came up is because they've approached the city a couple of times, saying that they would like to do some housing, affordable housing development in conjunction with the church. And so, it's trying to provide somewhat of an option for them, because they do have quite a bit of property that if they wanted to provide additional services, which they've kind of been heading that way a little bit more and more, under the current scenario, maybe a little bit harder. Under these two options, maybe a little bit easier for them to, to do that. And we should be looking for ways to provide a variety of housing types, which also means affordable, right? So, where can we fit in some of those affordability options? And that is, I would think in good planning, that we're spreading those affordable options around the community instead of making it seem like this is the bad neighborhood, this is the, is the good neighborhood, you know, that type of thinking. So anyways, I mean, more to discuss here, but-
Yeah, because I have thoughts, I thought, I have thoughts about how that could happen as well. Like, if we, like, we don't necessarily have to rezone things, we could provide density bonuses for certain mixes of incomes, for example, and that could be another way of handling it while also, like, allowing, you know, and enabling affordable housing while also like, you know, kind of ensuring a mix, I think. But it wouldn't just be, it's not just for this site, it's like kind of broadly applicable. So I think that's something that I would like to discuss.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, I just, I guess I struggle with the fact that they're probably one of the, they probably have more financial incentive than even private developers right now to actually do some of that, and to actually provide some of that housing immediately, because they will have an infusion of cash from other property sales that they're making.
Yeah.
So I almost see them as a potential like developer, look at them as a developer more than a current-
Right, and I think like, you know, if they were 10% of the neighborhood, like, I don't think we would be having this conversation, but here, they're like 80% of the neighborhood. So, I think there's also like the, you know, we sort of want mixed income neighborhoods. Like, there's a risk here, I think, that if we upzone too much, like, we sort of make a non-mixed income neighborhood. So how do we encourage, how do we incentivize that generally across the whole city? Like, what is the best way of approaching that? And I think it also applies, like, you know, this sort of like affordability density bonus, where we sort of set the parameters of that, could also apply to some of the sort of at-risk housing along 212th, and for example.
And my only other question would be, what could even be done with those purple parcels?
You can put some apartments on them, I think that's like about 120 feet.
All right, which, which ones are you talking about?
So, right on 220th and 56th on the west side?
Okay.
It almost looks useless to you, I mean, we should either just be orange in that block, or purple, is kind of my opinion, because, I mean, to have purple residential mixed use, none of those lots are going to get developed into-
So like how it is on option A?
Yeah. I mean, option B, the purple on the southwest side, those are just small individual lots that are going back, what?
I'm having some difficulty describing what you're looking at. Is that the ones directly on 56th on the west side?
So on B, the ones directly north of Pius?
Right.
So these?
Purple above the orange, yeah. I mean, why, why would we even then do that?
So those lots, I think, are-
These would just like two completely, should be all purple or all orange?
I think the, I think, so my understanding of the distinction between the purple and the orange is that the purple is two stories taller and has activity requirements. Those lots are probably at least 120, maybe 180 feet deep. If you think about like a downtown Seattle parcel, whatever, it's about half a block. So I think you can still do some things with there, I think you can still do some things with those.
Like, I think- Working a lot of construction, residential, mixed use, and I've never seen anything pencil out today.
Talking like five over ones, or like-
And maybe in twenty years it might pencil out, but I don't think today any of those lots are going to pencil out. So I guess my opinion is, just make it all the same. Why even upzone those? Otherwise, you do run into, I think what Christie was talking about is, you know, are we being fair across that whole block?
I think putting some kind of.
Good argument for the church to say, well, why did you make these tiny lots?
I think that thinking here about why we have sort of that residential mixed-use on two twentieth is, going back to previous planning commission meetings where we identified that specific areas, the neighborhood commercial node. So I think facilitating mixed-use development that allows to bring in those ground floor active uses along that street frontage and sort of provide that network.
Yeah, so I think, you know, I think this lot is, you know, much deeper than sixty feet. I think it's closer to like a hundred and twenty or a hundred and eighty feet, so it's close to a full block.
Maybe. I mean, they're about the same size as, I think.
Yeah, so like, I think, you know, I think, you know, there's also a concern that maybe all your, your comment reflects, which is that this is kind of the node that exists the least. And so I think that it will take some time for this node to sort of organically develop. And so I think using the capacity that we have and the current plat that we have, like, it sort of makes sense. Like, you can already see some businesses taking root on two twentieth. So I think the thought behind this is we kind of encourage that to, so that two twentieth doesn't just become like the highway with all of the houses having their backyards to them, but it becomes more of like a place and an identity. And so I think in a future version of this comprehensive plan, I could see this expanding once the neighborhood has sort of grown a little bit. But I think, you know, an instant neighborhood, like, I think it's going to take some work. But I do think that the plot, the land there should be, I would expect that. I, I mean, I feel like I've seen buildings with these dimensions before.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So an option B, where we have this orange here, R four, I think if we upzone that, we would have to upzone the other Saint Pius parcel because that's owned by Saint Pius.
Oh, even most of those other lots are?
Well, just this one we're having.
That long one. And, and you could just, but I mean, you could add that, we try not to split lots that are a singular lot or common ownership too much just because of that, of people being able to do something with their, with their entirety of the property, so that's kind of that. But I mean, it can all be changed. Why don't we go through the next ones and then we can just come back and discuss further? But one of the things Commissioner Morgan was that with our alternative three, we maxed out capacity. We can't serve it with water and sewer. So part of our conversation was if we upzoned certain areas, which we're upzoning a lot of areas, but we have a capacity issue with that. So we can put some more upzoning in this area, but then just kind of where would we maybe take away some of that? So when we did this option A and B, based on the planning commission comments last time, we tried to upzone in some areas and then maybe kind of not be as aggressive in some other areas that we talked about. So I think it might be helpful to go through the whole thing and then we can come back and then just get your guys' input on one by one, yea or nay, or whatever, however you guys want to lean or change it.
Yep.
Okay, southeast.
All right, with the southeast quadrant, it is an easy one as there was, is no difference between option A and option B. So moving on to the southwest quadrant, the largest, most obvious change is the bulk of residential neighborhood south of town center being increased in zoning from a residential two-zone to a residential three-zone in option B. So the main differences between residential two and residential three is that R two is primarily, only allows up to four units of middle housing, whereas the residential three-zone kind of allows for a more dense amount of middle housing and a wider variety of middle housing types as well.
And on both of these, we're still maintaining that town center reserve. So east and west of fifty-sixth avenue west, two lots deep, it's still town center reserve.
But we did increase densities previously, and this has always been on the maps of, on that southern portion adjacent to two hundred and forty-fourth of allowing more of that mixed-use and commercial because that's what we're seeing in shoreline, right? And that makes logical sense. That's pretty major transportation corridor. That's getting more developed, more aggressively. And it makes sense to us that we kind of upzone that bottom part as well adjacent to two forty-fourth. So that's, we've kind of left that. We didn't really comment on it. You guys didn't comment on it last time. So, yeah, but that is upzoned from what it is currently as well.
And that's all within our? Is that all within our own water and sewer? There's no one in that area that would be?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we serve it.
I wasn't sure if that exists anywhere really on this map where sewer and water might be served by?
The city serves everything inside of city limits is served by the city.
Long shoreline for.
Yeah, sure. No, I mean, sometimes you'll have cities with multiple, right, providers, but in our case, the city serves that, yeah.
Just a question about the difference between the zoning designations here. When we last met, I thought of the sort of residential three as sort of like R two flexi-zone where you could, you know, have, it's like, you know, probably about the size and shape of an R two, like the buildings would be built that way, but it's just a question of like, you know, how many more units can you have? Is that still the case and are we still, are we allowing single-family homes up to like however many plexes in this zone? Whereas in R two, we're capping it at four? And do we still allow single-family homes in like R four? Like, do all the residential zones allow for basically the, the range up to the limit?
Yeah, in the middle housing designations where both residential two and three are allowed, single-family's still allowed. So you wouldn't do away with single-family. It's just to provide more, right, variety in the housing. But I would say there definitely is a difference between two and three where the two is really for up to four plexes, right?
Yep.
Two-story kind of a situation. Residential three gets more aggressive where it's up to four stories potentially. So there is, there will be a difference, right, of how that looks and feels in those particular areas if people redevelop those. I doubt somebody's going to go to the trouble of trying to get enough lots to redevelop. You know, we've seen this in other developments around town, townhomes in particular, where you need more than one lot in most cases to redevelop. So trying to get those properties, I think what we would typically find is that people would want to get, maximize the density if, if they were going to redevelop that. Because we're going to be all redevelopment, right? So you'd have to demo the properties and, you know, get adjacent properties and then develop. But it, we don't preclude in the middle housing regulations, we don't preclude single-family like we would in like town center.
Right.
Where town center is not an option, but in these areas, you could potentially come in and either demo a house and rebuild it, or you could, you know, add on to, substantially to an existing single-family home, potentially. I mean, you could for sure, so.
And do our purple zones also have that same flexibility? Or do we limit what kind of development that could happen there outside of like where we have activity?
I think that's what we're going to talk about, and I don't think we want to get stuck right now with that so much. I think we want to put a designation and I think the particulars of that is what we can talk about in the zoning, which will be next of the very specifics, but just think of this as, okay, this is kind of the broad brush. Then we can get more specific to say, okay, do we want a requirement in these mixed-use kind of purple zones to do so much required commercial? And if so, does that, is that the whole thing or is that in specific? You know, where you're located on a major corner or whatever. But I think for us to try to figure that out right now, we'll never adopt a comp plan.
Right.
So let's just kind of get where we think the things are right and then we can get more into particulars of like, okay, we feel comfortable. Maybe it's an overlay on top of some of these purple areas.
Okay, yeah, because when I see squig, sorry, go ahead.
No, I like that.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I, I guess the genesis of my question is like when I see squiggly streets and I see upzones, I start like wondering like how practical is some of this stuff? And so I think, you know, when I look at neighborhoods like this where we're near the train and so I clearly like, you know, for the benefit of both recouping our transit investment and also just kind of for the activity and life of the neighborhood, I think it makes sense to, you know, build what we can, but also like give as much flexibility as possible while still encouraging like quality development. And so like, I think, you know, one of the, you know, critiques we've had of our previous town center plan and what maybe will be a future critique of some of our zones is that like it can be a little bit rigid and like presumes that, you know, entire neighborhoods of cul-de-sacs will get together and sell. And like, maybe it will happen, but I don't think it's something we can a hundred percent rely on. So I think when I see squiggly streets and I see upzones, I kind of want to allow flexibility. And so that was sort of the genesis of my question, like are some of these areas more flexible than others? And like, what does that mean?
I, I think since both of these options, these are specific to middle housing. So middle housing has to be allowed on a single parcel. So let's say one parcel wants to develop middle housing, the other has a single-family home. I think that's still able to be facilitated. They don't have to go about doing a aggregation.
Okay. So not like dooming some of these old blockers to just decay until somebody aggregates something that can be a six-story apartment building?
If the land use allows for that, but right now it's just that up to three-story middle housing.
I would say with two, residential two, where it's a four-plex, you're going to see a lot more development because you're probably not going to have to aggregate as readily. If it's R three, then it's going to be harder to fit more density on some of these parcels above four units to, to be real, right?
We, we still allow four units, right?
Yeah, you would allow four units, but I'm just saying if you upzoned it, it would. So, I mean, it kind of just depends on your perspective, but yeah. I mean, transportation network here isn't on a grid. So, you know, it's a little bit, it's a little bit trickier when you're trying to develop in some areas like this versus, hey, we've got a grid street pattern and, you know, we don't have any natural features and everything's kind of easier. But, you know, we have that here, so we just, it's something to consider though.
So that actually kind of touches on something that I've been thinking about, you know, in this area, given the squiggly street pattern. You know, we're, we're talking about creating a street, you know, further north, you know, at fifty-seventh. If we had a developer or an individual who was aggregating properties and it made sense to, you know, try and improve the grid down here, is there? I mean, you can't, it's not really reflected on the map right now, but like say if you were to say overlay what we would like to see a street network in the future be down here, how do we, how do we sort of circle that square to make that a possibility? Because if, you know, a developer may be, may, may look at this and says like, well, if only I could put a street here, I would do something, not realizing, well, how, how, how could we make that happen to, you know? You know, in, in some cases, it would be where the street exists now wouldn't exist in the future and where there isn't a street might be a street. And because of so many tiny parcels, I know, now this is a little bit harder than talking about one big, you know, one big super parcel on a block. Is that even feasible?
I mean, yeah, we would need to do potentially what we did for town center, which is kind of lay out a future street grid for connection points potentially. As I would say a next, you know, potential phase of the request of like the plant, planning commission to take a look at that and say, hey, if we were to try to take a look at this area and do some future connections, what makes, you know, what makes sense with engineering?
Yeah, because I know for me, if, if the street grid is improved.
Yeah.
Especially with connectivity to town center and the light rail restoration.
Yep.
How I approach zoning down here completely changes. I mean, even, even like right now, even without the, a decent grid, I still think this should be upzoned more. But I understand capacity and all that, but I think you improve that grid, the, what is feasible here changes.
Yeah, for sure.
And I think it's important to get that on the books to say, hey, this is something that we're thinking of and that we're amenable to and understand that maybe for the health of this neighborhood in the future in terms of development, if we want to see it happen, that needs to be part of the discussion.
You're giving the develop, potential developer a pathway.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I think, yeah, I think the same comments also apply to the west side of the interstate, squiggly lines, upzones. I would say this is worthy of another town center task force, actually. Like, if we're talking about reconnecting streets and giving identities and creating unique design, or extending unique designations from town center. And it's probably also healthy to have like an update of our current, like, you know, it's been around for five years. I mean, three of those were pandemic years, but I think it also would be helpful to have a retrospective of like kind of what works and what doesn't. Which doesn't answer the question tonight, I guess, but I don't know. My sense is that I think the most, like, giving the most flexibility, if they are able to build four-story buildings and make it work, maybe it's cool. But if they can't, you know, that's cool too. I think the thing I want to see close to the train station is flexibility. And then if we have a bigger vision that we can then come together as a community and create, then we should do that.
And I would say for me, what we're talking about, the closer you get to the train station, for me, the most important thing is density. The density needs to be as much as you can get as, as you get closer to that, as you get closer to that station. And I think in the, you know, the fact that we just have, you know, the train station just opened up. So it's going to take a while to, I mean, we all know what's going to happen. Man is going to slowly increase, but we can't point to it yet, but we know, we know what's coming.
Parking lot's already full.
The, the, I think what really is going to, you know, be keys, you know, just that connectivity, you know, making, making it just clear and easier to, to, to do your sort of intra-neighborhood connections. But still, the fact that this is where the highest demand is going to be for residential because of the station, it just makes most, the most sense to, at least to me, to have as much density as possible to, to accommodate that.
Yeah, I think when you also take a look at access, vehicular access, to me, one of the things that we talked a lot about in town center and I think some of these other areas, and I think this is why we need a bike and ped planning and trail planning in addition, is, you know, just for people walking or people riding a bike to light rail, not even just, I mean, vehicles included, but just, hey, if I lived in this, how far do I have to go out of my way to make my way to light rail? Because we have a lot of places that we don't really have pedestrian or bicycle accessibility readily. So I think it's a good comment to say, hey, we need to take a look. If we're going to redevelop some of these areas, we need to take a look as we tried to in town center to say some of this doesn't work. And we need to put additional connections in. So these areas work in more of, as much of a grid or connected as we can. You know, and some of these areas that have already developed, maybe a little bit. and some of these areas that have already developed, maybe a little bit harder than Town Center, but not necess- but you can still get additional connections in here. And I think that's really, would be worthwhile. So I think that's something we can pass along to take a look at this. And then also, you know, depending on the zoning, some of the other kind of upzoned areas, particularly if we're trying to get people to those multimodal neighborhood centers and such as well. So, good point.
I know there was, you know, previous discussion about, you know, a bike and ped plan. And obviously it's a good idea to have them, but because how much bike and ped plans interplay so much with zoning and land use, I, I feel that it's the planning commission's responsibility to kind of formulate that bike and ped plan.
Sure.
As opposed to it being a separate, another group that gets created for that. It's always, you know, it's good to get outside input, but I think because the two interplay so much, there, I mean, we can see the problem when there's, you know, the sort of the game of telephone or they get so many committees and it kind of has to work its way through, you know, the different groups. If, if it's just, if it's the planning commission that's the primary, primarily responsible for that, I, I think that is important because of how it plays with, with the zoning and all these other decisions that, that we're making. I know some people might, you know, feel different, but that's sort of my two cents. Yes for the plan, yes for the planning commission being the one responsible for.
And you guys have policies in for, for those plans. So I think that's, you know, something that's a really good comment that we include after we get these, this land use map done and get our zoning and stuff. I think that that's a really good exercise for us to do on some of these areas.
Yeah, I, I think if I understand what you're saying, a bike ped master plan would make sense for us to generate, but then I think maybe we still want the out, the other group to like continually update it and like comment on it. Is that what I hear you saying?
No, I think I would say it's just within the planning commission that does it. Yeah, kind of, kind of like how we do this, you know, where we still have open houses, you know, we, people are still able to make comment. You know, we can reach out to, you know, various cycling agencies or pedestrian advocacy groups, you know, get, you know, get their two cents in.
Yeah.
But it's still us that is creating it. And then that sort of helps us to, when we reckon, when we're like, hey, we need to revisit this sooner rather than later. I'm trying not to laugh when I say this, but we control our own schedule a little bit more when the state isn't telling us when we need to do things. You know, that kind of gives us, you know, just as much flex, you know, more flexibility as well.
Yeah, I think, I think a bike ped master plan advocacy group would, or group would be important to have just kind of as general to get a broader range of people who walk in bike and also to sort of help offload a little bit of our workload. But if it's like the comp plan where there's a group and then we sort of go through the planning commission and then it goes to council, how do you feel about that?
Again, I will disagree about offloading any of our workload. Over the years, I've seen so much stuff taken away from us. And things that I don't think should have necessarily been taken away from us. So when it comes to this or just a blanket statement for anything, I, I would never advocate for having it taken off of our plate. I think that's our role as the planning commissioner, as a planning commissioner and as a body. That's our responsibility to, you know, to kind of have this dialogue and make these plans and make these decisions. No, we're getting, we're kind of getting off track here.
Sorry, yeah, let's, let's come back to this. It's, I assume we're not adjusting the comp plan at this point for that.
Yeah, so I just wanted to quickly point out and just speaking to that connectivity, if you remember, the Town Center plan does assume a access corridor connection where my arrow is just north and south to 236 connecting. So just keep that in mind. Right here mid-block.
There are some pedestrian connections either to the buildings for vehicular, for parking and or ped connections through there, but they, they're limited to those Town Center areas. So that stuff south that we're talking about with the squiggly streets, registered trademark is, is something that, yeah, is worthwhile to take a look at of like, okay, so if we connect here, then how does the rest of this kind of flow into each other, I think is valid. Okay.
And so I wanted to bring back this discussion on the ground floor active overlay because we didn't really get to a decision on this. So part of this, of this is that we would potentially require a ground floor active overlay on some residential mixed use locations to activate that ground floor space. So this is just an example of, of a potential location on 44th and 228th Street. So just some questions we had was whether this should be required in all residential mixed use district locations or in some specific nodes such as those along 44th Avenue West. So that's the, this node, the one by Safeway, and then potentially even that Sorelli's note right there. And then secondly, there was conversation at our last meeting about requiring ground floor long street frontages. So should this apply only to street frontages? And then in terms of building height, we are assuming that there'll be a max of four to six stories, no minimum for the residential mixed use land use designation. However, when we apply this ground floor active overlay, should there be a requirement to have a minimum building story height? So potential would be four stories.
So I'm, I'm assuming ground floor, ground floor activation means having a business on the ground.
Yes, some type of business or service. And I mean, we don't have to solve this question tonight, and I think the overlay is something we can do with zoning. But I think for you guys to start thinking about these type of things, and this is why we say this as staff, is planning commission, the way we hear you, and you can correct us if we're wrong, that you really wanted to try to create some of these neighborhood centers that were activated. If you don't do some type of requirement for some of these areas to be activated, I can assure you they will not be, and it will be all residential that will be proposed and created here. Because most developers do not, I mean, they're not penciling their project out based on active ground floor use. They're penciling their project out for residential. So that's fine, and if that's what you would like, great. But rest assured that if you want something that's more like you're starting to create these neighborhood nodes with a little bit of mixed use along these major transportation corridors, then staff is recommending that you think about where you would like to require that in these kind of mixed use areas. So something to think about. And then what we did in Town Center is we kind of had minimum heights. Is that something that you would want here or not so much here? Just something for you guys to think about down the road. We don't have to put the overlays on as part of the land use maps that can come with our zoning, but it's something to think about in relationship to, hey, here's where all these purples are and just kind of start thinking about that. Because after you guys are done with the comp plan and in October we go through city council, then we're going to start working on these other things, this middle housing and the particulars of zoning and just kind of start thinking about how that looks to everybody on the planning commission as we kind of walk through that. Because we're going to start getting fairly specific. We've got general purposes for zoning, but we're going to kind of dot our i's and cross our t's on some of this stuff a little bit more. So anyways, just throwing that out for you guys on that.
I would, I would say I was kind of already alluding to that, you know, when I was talking about, you know, the Northern Lights and even down the same place, especially across the street from, not Jack Long Park, but Evergreen Playfield, you know, the, the idea that there's such potential there for commercial activity, not only for the neighborhood, for people visiting the neighborhood, because that's a busy park. You drive, I mean, I'm driving there because I, I really hate it when I see lights on at night and especially because I have to deal with it where I'm at, you know, for, for fields. But the, the fact that you could drive by there at like nine o'clock at night and see tons of people playing soccer and you think, these are adults, we're not talking about kids, these are adults, these are adults who may want to grab a bike to eat afterwards.
Right.
And if they could just walk right across the street and hit an establishment, that's also within walking distance of everybody in that, that node who really isn't within walking distance of anything else.
Right.
There's definitely potential there. You're not going to get that if you don't mandate the, the ground floor activation.
Right.
I, I, for me, I just assumed if we're making it mixed use.
Yeah.
That that's what we're.
I agree.
That's what we're assuming.
Yeah, and, and maybe you guys land on that. We just wanted to bring it up that there's more than one way to do that. And so just to think about how you want to do it. Do you want it across the board? You want it in certain locations? However, however that looks to you, I think we talk about it more, but just kind of get the wheels turning for all the commissioners as we get ready to talk about these things as we move forward after the comp plan.
I would say like, and again, I kind of said this before too, the majority of the places that we sort of talked about where this scenario exists tonight, you know, like the, you know, the 44th or the 56th, it definitely makes sense to put it on those frontages where the streets exist. But we're also dealing with really large parcels that may create new streets in the future. And does it, I think it needs to be sort of a case by case basis whether or not it makes sense to require that on like a new street that currently doesn't exist or on, you know, a, a site, a street that isn't really known for any commercial activity and probably isn't going to be known for any commercial activity in the new, in the new future. Because I know that when I say just make everything more Town Center, like you guys keep coming back to me and said, oh, there's, there's a overbuilt issue, you know, there's a, we can only have so much. And it's like, I would love to think that especially in these other nodes, that there would be a demand to have commercial on multiple streets next to, you know, block by block by block. But I know that's probably not going to be the case, not only new term, but probably long term. But there is, there probably is going to be the demand for it being on the one block, but.
Right.
Not, not further setback. So as long as there's, however it's worded or tweaked, that it, it says definitely on those, you know, main roads, but it gives us flexibility in the future to say yes or no, when it, when, you know, especially with these large parcels, if they get broken up and more, you know, the street, the street network expands. I'm assuming by then, that by that point, we're probably revisiting the zoning anyway. But.
Right, but I mean, we can write that in.
I don't want to get caught with our pants down.
Yeah.
You know, have something, but makes sense at the time because we're thinking in the future, but then all of a sudden somebody finds a loophole, exploits it, and then we're kind of like, ah!
Yeah.
Because that's happened in the past.
And we can write that into, you know, that's where we get particular with the code. And, and you can do that. I just wanted to start this conversation.
That happens in later in October when we talk about.
Uh, yeah, well, we'll pick, we'll pick it back up on all the middle housing and then all the changes that we've created with renaming zones and tweaking them, that all come, becomes part of your first wave of development code that we have, were required to adopt by the end of June. And then there'll be more. But there are some things that we have to have adopted per the new state laws by the end of June. So we want to make sure those things are taken care of. And then, yeah, there's, there's plenty of work for y'all to do in addition to all the things that you want to do, right?
So I think, you know, ground floor active overlay probably works better for some sites, but I think we also need to look at some alternate ways. Like, you know, we don't necessarily want to put like all our sidewalk cafes directly on like, you know, 44th, right? Like I think that, you know, especially for a larger site like this, you could also have an alternate design where you sort of create like an internal pavilion or something kind of like they're doing up at Lynn Woods, that station, that development they're building just north of the station, where they've created an interior park. And then like that's kind of the big pedestrian area. And then maybe it reaches out further. But I think this is a good question to ask because I think there's a lot of ways to handle it. And I don't know, you know, there's probably some, you know, like ground form, like minimum retail requirements is an example of how you could do it. Or I don't know if we can even say you can't reduce the amount of retail square footage, which could be like a very heavy-handed way to do it. But I think that this like is something that we should be looking at neighborhood by neighborhood. And there might be multiple mechanisms that we want to tailor to each one.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, you get better building design when you have courtyards anyway, both at the residential level and in the ground floor level. And I would also agree too, you don't always want the sidewalk cafes on the frontage because most like, most of the time sidewalk cafes take up right of way space. And we have so many different ideas and plans of what we want our right of way space to be. I would rather see the sidewalk cafe be allowed, but on private property. Because, you know, we're talking about wider sidewalks and benches and street trees, bike lanes, you know, all these things that take up right of way space. And then when you have a sidewalk cafe encroaching into that, you're, you gotta have to pick or choose.
Right.
When you, you know, when you think of sort of the internal courtyard and maybe have, so, you know, the cafe's still on the, you know, it's a ground floor activation, the restaurant is, but the outdoor component of that, it's still on the ground floor, it's still activating the space, but it's activating sort of their, sort of quasi-public space, you know?
Right.
Technically private property that, that the public could get. And again, it's sort of neighborhood dependent. Each neighborhood might have a little bit of different character in, in, in what you want to see. So definitely, you know, allowing that flexibility, I would, I would agree is, is a necessity because trust me, I live and breathe right of way right now. So I, I understand how it's, it's a finite resource. So the more, the more we can put on, the more we require and require it on private property, I think, I think probably will, will set the city up better, you know, you know, in the future.
Okay.
So it sounds like.
Go ahead.
It sounds like the direction is maybe we table this for where we work on our zoning code updates.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's going to be, I think they're going to be, I think we'll have the tool belt of several tools and we'll need to apply them in different ways and different, especially for some of these neighborhoods we're kind of creating from scratch here.
Yeah, and I mean, it's common that we have a land use designation and then we can apply some zoning overlay. So I don't think it's a problem. So we'll do that. So we're gonna, we're gonna go to the way back and we're gonna take these one by one and have you guys make some decisions tonight.
All right.
So just for clarification, when we say option A or option B, that's only for each quadrant? It's not saying we, like if we want option A, we have to choose option A for every single quadrant?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Yep. So with the northeast quadrant, what stood out to me is sort of this east of forty, sorry, west of 44th, where we have this solo purple land use designation. The question is whether we should extend that to include the whole parcel?
Well, I think it's two parcels, isn't it? Yeah, so, yeah, we would change it from, I think the question is change it from residential four to mixed use where it encompasses that whole corner is, I think, what we heard. And connect the purples.
And that would be an option B.
And option B has the cul-de-sacs removed and option A has the cul-de-sacs in for the purple?
Option B has the cul-de-sacs removed, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
We're, we're sort of jumping around.
Well, yeah, I think let's, let's do.
I think he started talking about the north and then he started talking about the south.
Let's talk south and then just kind of roll down.
Sorry, sorry, I misunderstood. I thought we were talking quadrant by quadrant.
No, I mean, I'm confusing it where I'm.
Yeah.
So I think we, we start at the top and you guys, maybe if we can get an affirmative by vote of direction, we would ask, just so we're clear with every, if that's the majority would like to do A or B.
So just again, because we have.
For the very top.
For, for the northeast quadrant, we actually have two different.
Right.
Areas that we're talking about. When we say A, do we have to say we're agreeing to A for both the north and the south?
Nope.
Or can we say?
Let's do them separate. So A, A north, B north. Does that make sense to everybody?
And B, and B north would also include the Northern Lights parcel as the mixed use like it is for the 44th Market at the corner and the church property.
Oh, right. We would only be changing that orange, what the comment was, which is, do you want to include that as the purple as well?
And I just realized as we're going into the nitty gritty of voting for this, without the screen in front of me, I have not been looking to see if any of our online commissioners have had their hand raised. I completely apologize. I want to make sure they're actively participating in this discussion. I just want to make sure. I just want to make sure, does anybody have any comments or other, other questions that are, uh, coming up? Or maybe we'll give you a chance to talk before we do sort of these votes on each one of these sections.
Um, I don't have anything more to add, um, that you guys haven't talked about. Um, I've also been just trying to zoom in on my screen and make sure I'm following along, which each specific parcel we're looking at. But I think, um, for now, I'm feeling good until the discussion continues at a later time.
Great. Again, I apologize not having that screen right in front of me. It's really easy to forget to look up and, and see those hands raised. So again, sorry.
No worries. We're here with you.
So we can start with this Northern Lights parcel. Is that a yes to?
Making it more purple?
Yes.
Say yes to connect the purples.
Yes, I agree. Uh, connect the purples.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree. I agree.
Okay.
Okay. And then so north A and B, north B, um, the change here is, so we have, um, R three versus that residential mixed use. Um, with additional parcels reflected here.
For the north part of this, um, I would like option B with the connected purple.
Say it again?
Option B with the connected purple. That's the.
On the north, yeah.
On the north.
That's what we, we all.
So there's a little bit difference is you go further down to the south, still connected, but we added some more purple in that little box area. So is that look okay for everyone that we have that additional purple? I think once you made the decision to do the option B on this stuff, that's a little further north, it makes sense that you just connect the whole thing.
Yeah.
Right? And we have kind of a more.
That street just.
Yeah. Or else it would seem a little weird. Okay. So purple it is. Doesn't sound like there's any change on the option B with, on the north side, except that we're gonna do that Northern Lights parcel, um, with purple.
Got it. All right. So south A and south B, the only difference here is on option B, we have the removal of residential mixed use on some of the cul-de-sacs.
I, here's, here's my thought on, we're talking about the southern part of the quadrant here. Um, I don't think we would see much development again if it was the individual parcels, especially when we're looking north of two twenty-eighth. Um, that is like showing it, uh, you know, for, uh, option B, whereas I think option, option A provides more opportunity for growth in this node. But knowing, cause commissioner brought this up previously, trying to get cul-de-sacs to redevelop and aggregate, it's hard. By, by having the option, the option is there. Will we see it? Probably not. But I'd, I'd like to be able to provide the option. Um, if, if there is somebody with the means and, and the will to make that happen, I, I think it should happen. But so I, I'm leaning towards A, but I'm also under no delusions of grandeur, thinking that the, the cul-de-sac sections of these would be developed anytime in the near future.
Yeah. I think the risk of turning the cul-de-sacs purple is that we then restrict anything else from happening. And so I think in order to give maximum flexibility, like, you know, the four story or maybe, I don't remember whether it was three or four story. I think last time maybe we talked about three when we were talking about us, but it sounds like it went back to four. Um, like I think that then creates this weird transition period where it either develops into a giant building or nothing at all, like in the house to there just decays. So I think I'm kind of leaning towards option B, just because I think that for practicality, that's going to be the most reasonable thing. I think if we create a vision for this neighborhood and the way we created a vision for town center, which I think we should do for all of the nodes. Um, like maybe that changes, but for this exercise, I think we want to keep it B.
Is there any examples of what's happened around cul-de-sacs in this?
You know, the only cul-de-sac that's transitioned so far is the one adjacent to the light rail station where that was fifty-ninth place. Um, and you know, that was aggregated, rezoned, and now it is going to be the Candela project. It can happen.
Pretty reasonable to assume that it. Eminent domain was involved.
Um, it was not actually.
Oh, okay. Well, the threat of eminent domain was involved.
Yes.
They were going to take.
Yes.
What happened there was, uh, Sound Transit was going to eminent domain. It, uh, developer swooped in and offered them a bit more than eminent domain. So it was either take eminent domain or take a developer offer that was a bit more. So they took the developer offer.
Yes. So you're exactly right.
So, but it, it can happen. So I guess.
Eminent, with eminent domain. Um, that makes things happen.
But that wouldn't be us. That would be a public entity going in and acquiring all the land, which is.
Right.
Yeah, it's private market driven.
Yeah.
But it does show that there are different levels of developers and different, obviously, different types of development. And there are developers with the means to do that kind of acquisition.
Those are, like, I've actually eyeballed that site and those are kind of older, probably less. I shouldn't say a whole lot. Those seem like homes that could easily be turned over in the next 10 years. And I mean, at some point, the structural integrity of them could prove that.
Well, you bring up, you bring up a good point and you can probably say this across the board. The majority of the city's housing stock is now hitting that age where homeowners are going to have to seriously look, is it even, is it worth continuing to put money into the existing structure? Or is it, is it starting to hit that tipping point where it makes more sense to do, do a full redevelopment or a, you know, a complete gut job that would be, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars more. But every, you know, every house is going to be different, but as a city, you know, our housing stock is starting to get up there in age as well. So that is a consideration to think about.
Yeah. So I think, um, you know, they probably, you know, the, the odds of things getting redeveloped or not, you know, probably higher with older buildings. And we've got that map kind of predicting where it might happen. Um, my sense with these cul-de-sacs is that they could redevelop, but I think if you required aggregation of entire cul-de-sacs to redevelop, it would make it harder for that process to happen. And allowing sort of a piecemeal development to transition to the next phase might be good.
I'm just drawing a box and that looks like an ideal developer to come in and buy the, the empty spot that's there now, the apartments around it. And then come in and acquire those older homes around it. We've got a nice.
Yeah, it's really easy to.
Average five, five over two.
It's easy.
I, I would, I would be interested to see how often that actually happens in our region. Like I think we have difficulty with lot aggregation now in the town center. And if we have difficulty there, we're going to have more difficulty here. Um, all this to say, I don't necess- my issue with this isn't necessarily the proposed maximum. It's the proposed minimum. Like disallowing smaller buildings or shorter buildings. Like I think for those, flexibility is important.
I guess residential four technically would still allow for a five over two mixed use, correct?
Residential four would allow a max site of four stories.
Which is like, which is like within the range.
Yeah. And that might be more.
Residential mixed use max four to six.
In that area over residential mixed use.
Yeah.
But I mean, mixed use, it's still four to six.
Yeah, but it's a four, it's like a four minimum and mixed use requirement.
Well, well, again, I don't know that we've talked about what the extent of the ground floor commercial requirement is yet, right? Or it's saving that kind of. So is there necessarily a ground floor activation component on those cul-de-sacs? Or is there just a zoning requirement? So I mean, I think that's up for, for you guys to talk about further.
That would make a lot of sense. I wouldn't see wanting to activate necessarily that cul-de-sac, but at least activating.
Again, the front, yeah, like on.
Right.
I think it's, it's, it's kind of a shame when you, you see Cedar Plaza. Very auto-oriented development that, uh, was actually put in later. A lot of the houses predate that by, um, many years. But when you realize, okay, you have this sort of commercial node, and then when you look across the street north of two twenty-eighth, you're seeing people's backyards and fences. And that's just such a lost opportunity for that to be some sort of commercial, you know, commercially activated space as well. Cause you gotta remember, again, this is.
Briar.
This isn't just a neighborhood node for us. This is Briar. This is Briar. Essentially, this is Briar's downtown is us. Um, so it's, it's, you know, it's a lot more than, you know, we, we've sort of been talking about these nodes in terms of directly adjacent neighborhood, ideally within walking distance. But, you know, especially in this case, we, you gotta realize that we have a completely auto-dependent city. I shouldn't say city, town, to, to the east of us that is only going to be driving here. But it also means it's a whole lot more people coming through that area than what we would be maybe thinking of, you know, in some of these other nodes. Or, or different, different, you know, not, not residents of the city, but somebody completely from the outside, you know, coming in and the, the ability to, more ways to capture those revenue, those revenue tax dollars. Um, that's kind of my mindset as well.
And I, I would actually be willing to bet a lot of, whatever development happens there, the people using transit there may actually even end up in Linwood over our station anyways. And so having density there is also feeding into Linwood and not necessarily thinking about what's happening here.
Mm-hmm.
That makes sense. Cause I would, personally, if I was riding my bike, I'd ride my bike down forty-fourth. I wouldn't try to work my way down twenty-eighth and, you know, do the whole uphill downhill battle.
Right, right.
To our train. So that's why I do see that as a good place for us to try and really increase density. Because even though there's no transit today, I think it's an easy, easily accessible.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think we're in agreement that we want, we want to allow more density. But I think my sticking point is do we prohibit less density in areas where it might be difficult to develop? So I think.
What are we limiting? So, so with, with residential mixed use, does any of the middle housing fall under that four to six story mixed use?
So the purpose, as it's written here, is to provide land in efficient densities for middle housing and multifamily residences and encouraging the development of mixed use buildings with resident oriented ground floors.
Wouldn't just be five over two. This could be one of the other options we were shown that middle housing could include. Okay.
It's meant to be a transitional zone between, between residential land uses and higher intensity.
So to me, that seems almost really ideal.
Yeah. Yeah, I think.
It's, it's not necessarily going to be a five over two type of, it could just be some row houses or I don't even know if maybe some of these work law.
Mm-hmm.
Units could even fit into that, but it sounds like.
Yeah. And it doesn't, and it doesn't disallow people from like, you know, living on their land and improving their own house, which, yeah. Like it gives, it gives, it gives flexibility for an area that's probably hard to redevelop, but you know, it can't, we're giving it potential. We're allowing it to develop to a higher level if it wants to.
I guess it's just my, my brain likes to see more rational sizes of these blockings of zones where it seems like there could be a reasonable investment to actually do something.
Mm-hmm.
That we're looking at something that is valuable for upzoning.
Mm-hmm.
For us to build a community center or a town center in that area.
Yeah, which I think we can get with the, with the darkest orange, but the purple then like is a different thing entirely, I think. Like there's a step change there. The, the oranges are kind of a gradient. And then like, do we want a step change there in those cul-de-sacs?
Maybe we just add an orange around that cul-de-sac?
Yeah, I think that gives flexibility without restricting people. And then we'll have to look at design standards for where those things are but, I guess.
So are you seeing a residential four on all the cul-de-sacs? Commissioner Betcher?
I think so, yeah. How does that, does that sound like? Or maybe, I don't know. I thought of R three as sort of the flexy zone, but maybe R four is one too.
So it would.
I think what you can get with residential four, you can still get with residential mixed use. Um, cause we would still allow multifamily without that mixed use component.
Yeah, but we wouldn't allow a single family or smaller, um, multifamily or missing middle in that case, right?
That is the missing middle. I think that's the middle housing.
Does purple go for this?
Purple.
Okay.
And they actually have a maximum height of four to six. So this, this isn't town center one.
I think this is intended to be a step up from middle housing, the purple. In my estimation. And here on your cheat sheet, it kind of says for efficient densities for middle housing, but I really think the intent when we get to the purple is a step up from, from four. I really think two, three and four is where middle housing is. And then this is your next gradient up, right?
Right. Okay.
Yeah. So.
Sorry for that error on that.
Okay. So I see here the, um, minimum height is, uh, specific to ground floor active use overlay. So would we allow a single family house in the purple if they didn't have the overlay or whatever?
I would say it's really not intended for single family.
Mm-hmm.
I think the true intent, and I think the conversation, well, it could, it could be condominiumized and, and those type of things. But yeah, like, could you go in and rebuild a single family house? I don't really think the intent in these, these more intense nodes, that's to me what the vision has been. To me, the vision has been denser here, adjacent to activated ground floor usage in some capacity in some locations. Is that necessarily on those cul-de-sacs? Maybe it's not. And maybe it's not required. It could be, I think, what we've done in town center, which is to say in these areas of town center, commercial is required. We want these ground floors activated. In these areas, you can do ground floor commercial activation or you can do straight residential. I think those same concepts work in, in these purple areas as well. Where everything doesn't need to have a ground floor commercial component. But some areas, yeah, we want, we want some ground floor commercial component to it or some type of component to it. So to me, two, three and four is really your middle housing. Um, and once you kind of step up to purple, I think you're in that next level up, whatever, whatever that is. But a little bit denser around these, these areas. Kind of key corners, right?
Right.
So can we call for a decision of purple or I guess A or B or changing?
The hangup is the, the cul-de-sacs.
The cul-de-sacs.
Yeah.
So can we agree, can the planning commission, I guess, agree that save the cul-de-sacs, you're okay with going purple?
Yes.
Okay.
You mean, we, we're okay with all the non-cul-de-sac portions being purple. It's the discussion of the cul-de-sacs that we're talking about. If I understand what you're asking.
So we would go with option B and then we would talk about the three basic cul-de-sacs. Are those other areas right? Um, what you want to do though, so we've, we, are you agreeing as a body on, on the purple?
I guess, I guess it's a question of purple or purple.
Look at me. I like making decisions for you.
Yeah.
So, so in option A, take away the cul-de-sacs just for what I'm talking about right here.
Yeah.
Option A, we still have the purple going up further north on forty-fourth.
Right.
We, I think, and we have, uh, uh, on both sides, east and west side. Um, no, just, just, just on one side. Sorry. Everything's getting all blurry. Trying to, trying to squint. Um, um, yeah, so I think, I think it is important to maintain that ground floor activation that you're going to get with commercial on the parcels that front forty-fourth.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and to me, I, I feel the same for, you know, the parcels that front, um, two, two twenty-eighth as well. That would mean not taking, you know, the cul-de-sacs in whole. But just, you know, at least maintaining the parcels that are, you know, fronting the road. So there's. So there's sort of two options here. One, I think, whatever decision we, you know, the, keeping the purple on 44th is important.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because that's, that gets taken away in option B. Um, but how the, how the cul-de-sacs are treated, uh, I think is tricky. Because I think, um, when we're looking at the cul-de-sacs, the one that is directly north of 228th is a little bit different than the one that is north of that.
Mm-hmm.
So, and, and you could even, you know, make the same argument for the one that is south of 228th to the, to the west of 44th. Each, we're, we're just sort of saying cul-de-sac. But I think location is a big key on, on how they're going to be rezoned. Um, and how, and how the access-
And size of the-
Location, size, and access, I think.
Of the lot.
They're each, they're all, they're all, they're all their own little animal.
Mm-hmm.
I have a proposal. Um, just hearing this conversation, what if we keep the purple along the street frontage on 44th here? Um, and also keep this cul-de-sac purple just as a way to facilitate that ground floor. Um, however, um, we could turn this yellow, um, right here. So how, how it is an option B.
Away from 44th?
Yeah.
Okay, I apologize.
You could, you could even turn it orange.
Can you, can you just re, re-say what you just did with your cursor? So I can actually see what-
The street frontage along 44th, keep this purple?
Okay.
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
And keep this cul-de-sac purple? How, but we will, we can turn this to R, R4 or as it is in option B, which is R2.
I would prefer that.
Or R3.
I think that, that whole parcel, yeah, that's south of 228th, including that cul-de-sac is a very valuable thing. Whereas what is on the north east side that you proposed, I, I think makes sense because those cul-de-sacs in the back are most likely not going to get developed. Just based on the shape of how those all come together, that would be a complex.
I also think, yeah, since we are upzoning this parcel here, I think we do need to take away some residential mixed use. So we take it away from this, I think that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, yeah, we're kind of trading off.
But you keep that cul-de-sac to the south of 228th.
Is, is there a way, so we're, so we're just sort of, right now, I'm just focusing on the, the northeastern cul-de-sac that's adjacent to 228th. Is there a way to keep it at that lower zoning, but still allow the potential for some sort of ground floor activation? Or would it only, it would only strictly allow residential and that's it?
Right now, it's basically the way that the residential is described is definitely middle housing. I would have to create a new zoning designation.
So it's strictly residential land uses?
To kind of get back to my other comment, you know, it's just, it's a shame that, that's, that side of the street, you know, it just had its back facing to 228th. It's just, it's just, you're seeing, you don't even see backyard, you're just seeing fences. I mean, there's nothing worse when you're driving down the street and all you see is just a wall of fence.
Mm-hmm.
It's, it'd be nice to be able to activate both sides of that street. Now, again-
Are you talking about like here?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with that. You pull out of there and you see that?
And again, everything is context dependent. In, in site location, you know, the topography's a little funky there, especially from the intersection. As you go east, you know, there's a little bit of an uphill climb. Right now, there really isn't anything happening on the south side of that street the way the property is currently developed. But again, I'm looking far, far in the future. If Cedar Plaza were to ever redevelop, that's possible. How that exists now will not be how it exists in the future.
Mm-hmm.
And it's just, if the opportunity to activate not only 44th but 228th exists, I'd like to make sure that we keep that option open and available.
So that cul-de-sac to the north of 228th? Yes, you would like to keep that bottom one in purple as well.
So it's like draw an L?
Yeah.
Basically along the frontage?
Yeah.
I think, I think that makes sense. Like, that I could see like half of a cul-de-sac working out.
Oh my goodness, you guys are agreeing so much right now.
No, I think-
Look at this.
I think we, I think we kind of agree in broad strokes. It's just a question of how we implement this, like, and what the procedure is like.
And, and I think this is in a case where, say, we do, in the future at some point, there is a developer who has the means and has the vision to do that entire cul-de-sac. And then they can, they can do their amendment request.
Yeah, nothing's set in stone. I mean, you know, this thing, I mean, things change. Um, and so we're trying to make the best decisions we can today. But like I tell everyone, i- it's with Town Center plan, it's with any plan. You keep what works and then you see what doesn't work. And it's our responsibility to say, you know what? On second thought, we thought that was a great idea, but maybe not so much.
And, you know, and again, this could, like all the other lots we're talking about, it could be 20 or 30 years-
Yeah.
-before we were-
We're doing a 20-year plan, right?
Right.
I, I just would say, we, we've sort of lived in this suburban development mindset for, you know, for 50, 60 years. We are finally starting to see a change in that mindset. Where it used to be, people who lived in, in, in the suburbs wanted no change at all, and that's how it was, and that's how they grew. We're finally learning how, you know, policies from the top down, you know, from the feds mandating certain things, you know, how FHA financing. We're finally realizing, and I say we, you know, the general public is realizing, hey, this doesn't work. There is a better option. Newer generations, they're more open to change. So it's, I can't say now, oh, it's never going to change. It's, now it's within the realm of possibility that we could see that change. I think it's just important that we, we have that indication. It's like, yes, we recognize that there, there could be a change and we are open to that change. And we, you know, in some cases, it's just, it's sort of, you know, opening that door.
Mm-hmm.
And then as we're talking about changes, like, well, let's look at the pieces of land that I've been staring at for the last 45-plus years and shaking my head like, good grief, if we had a chance to fix this, wouldn't that be something? And this is our chance to start that process.
All right, so it looks like we have-
So when you say we're going to do an L-shaped-
An L, right?
And keeping the purple cul-de-sac on this?
Yep.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Right here.
Okay, I think we got one map down.
Well, um, do you want this to be R3 or R4? The other piece?
Or just keep it as it is?
Or keep it as it is, which is R2.
So what is it now? Is it, what is that?
R2?
That's R2, so that's up to four units, more flex.
Yeah. I don't know.
Okay, well, good grief.
Yeah, I mean, I think the, uh, you know, this is sort of one of those neighborhoods that I think will eventually become something that gets better infrastructure. But for now, I think the lack of infrastructure might limit this neighborhood somewhat.
Yeah, and access.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know how you all feel, but I feel like the, you know, item number one is to sort of develop and kind of ensure, like, you know, activation and a pleasant experience and positive, like, you know, like central place, right? So I think, um, we need to think about, um, the, you know, design standards and required, you know, retail and all that. Um, what do you all think about? How do you all feel like the cul-de-sacs to the north contribute to that?
So I guess, I, I'm not understanding that, but one thing that comes to my mind is what, the, we have a risk in this area right now.
Mm-hmm.
And it is the grocery store.
Mm-hmm.
And I do feel like, thinking about how future density would be looked at by a grocery store to stay versus want to close up.
Mm-hmm.
Right, and need the people.
Retail leads residential, okay? That's, that's just a fact. So the more density-
Keep that grocery store. I think that paying attention to how we help them see that density is going to increase in the future.
Right, or stuff around it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
How much do we need to do that? I think that's a good question for economic development analysis. But it sounds like you're in favor of making the cul-de-sac to the north R4 as opposed to R2?
E-
Or do we keep it R2 or does it matter?
Is that mode this one here?
Uh, yeah. Yeah, the street front, I think we've identified the street frontages being active is pretty important.
I feel it's the simplicity, though, of what we're displaying in A.
Yeah.
And it's already drawn. And it does kind of make sense for that neighborhood today. Probably makes the most sense rather than trying to cut this. I mean, the L makes sense that we're trying to make accommodation for that, but we might as well just extend it out, you know?
I think the, I think the issue I have is the prohibition on lower development. If we can get around that, then I think it's okay to leave purple. If not, then I think we should make it, allow it to be something other than the most dense it can possibly be.
You're upzoning it right now. You're upzoning that whole corridor. I mean, so even with R2, it's upzoning from R1. So you're doing a lot of upzoning around these particular areas, right? So it's not like you're not doing that. Um, so just, yeah.
I feel that we're, yeah, we're trying to pinch pennies to not save a lot.
Mm-hmm.
I think the ultimate goal is to just encourage development in that area and simplifying the boundaries of what is developable rather than trying to make it really complex in there is probably the easiest path forward.
Right, but there's like simplicity of map and then there's simplicity of development standards. And I think the purple is a more complex development standard than the residential. Um, the purple, like, you know, has an assumption of activation in certain parts and an assumption of a particular kind of density.
We have a-
Right.
That's the future. That, that's where we can then, I think, alleviate your concern about just what type of density does occur.
Right, like if someone wants to build a duplex in there, I would like them to build a duplex. Um, I would like them to not be prohibited from building a duplex.
Yeah, I, I think the likelihood of someone going into one single family lot and building a duplex is probably very low. But somebody buying up two lots and maybe doing it.
It's actually pretty, it's actually pretty common. I see a lot of people like attaching a couple of ADUs in the backyard of a house or whatever.
So-
Can we move you along?
Yeah, we were close on the decision.
Or just take a vote of where you're going?
Did we go backwards?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think we're kind of back to A or B on that south portion. What is the majority?
I would like, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm for A.
I'm for B with A's, uh, 44th and 228th parcels being purple.
So I, I don't mind A, but I thought we had to make accommodations because we made the top part purple. I thought we had to swap out some stuff. If we don't, then I-
That's correct, but we can also make those trade-offs in other areas.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, let's just go with A because it does sound like it's less complicated.
Yeah, Jenna and Steve.
Yeah, how about our online commissioners? Trying not to forget.
Yeah, I, I would vote for option B with the 228th and 44th at Parson, and Parson, in purple. Um, just like Commissioner Betcher said.
Okay, so she's-
I couldn't catch that, I'm sorry.
I think she's B with the L-shaped purple.
Yes, I am.
Great.
Hey.
And Commissioner Landis?
And the L-shaped is this?
Yeah, I was leaning towards the same. I liked the, uh, L-shaped purple approach that we discussed.
Oh, boy.
Okay, rock, paper, scissors.
We got a tie now.
How do we settle the tie?
Uh, we-
Arm wrestling.
Talk about the other sections and come back to this at the-
All right.
Okay.
Think about it.
So we're going to keep this a question?
Yeah.
Um, option B would be the L. You're, you're a tie. Okay, northwest.
So northwest quadrant between the two is residential, residential mixed use versus R4. There was also discussion on upzoning these parcels adjacent to 20th intersection at the eye of it.
Okay, which I think makes sense.
And to what would that be upzoned to?
Purple, probably, because, uh, it's off of 220th and then presents opportunities to activate an underutilized park and then also 220th, even though it's just like watching cars zoom off the freeway.
Which park?
Jack Long right there?
So kind of show, yeah, there you go. So you're saying make that purple. Um, do you keep the church purple as well? Or do you put the purple adjacent to Jack Long and you do the R4 at St. Pius?
I think then we also do the R4 at St. Pius and then maybe have in the future some possible, um, like affordable housing incentives. And then we can, uh, work with the church more closely on whatever they develop in the future.
We do have some affordable housing incentives right now in the, um, in the mixed use of where there was, not mixed use, what am I talking about? Multifamily, um, tax exemption program. There's two ways to go. One is, um, getting, uh, um, some tax relief um, for, um, multifamily. And the other one is getting additional tax relief if you have a certain percentage that's affordable. So we do have that right now. And I know that the state's working on additional provisions. So I think that's going to work itself out just with new state law. I think with the orange, what, what we've heard that would get St. Pius to where they want to be for what they've told us they want to develop. I guess the question is, do you want to be more aggressive than that? Or would you rather shift the purple over adjacent to north of Jack Long Park and then keep the orange? Which I think we could probably make that trade, um, doing that with capacity.
Mm-hmm.
So we could just make that whole-
Purple?
Purple. What about that orange to the north? That's that little boop-boop.
Yeah, what is that?
Oh, this here?
That's like the vacant lot just to the north of
Make that purple.
I think, I think, I think it logically fits a purple.
I do too. I mean, if you're gonna make the other side of the street purple, it makes sense to just kind of make that all purple.
Yeah, I think that like makes logical sense. Activates the park, even though there's a giant hill behind it, like we gotta, like this is a this is a, you know, we, this, I think all of our nodes need love, but this one needs love in figuring out how to make Jack Long like a usable park that also is activated. And so I think we'll need some park edge development standards and whatnot there.
Okay, so we could do that with zoning. So option B maybe morphs to just extending that purple to the west, which is north of Jack Long and then north of 220th. So we just kind of have a more intense purple along 220th.
Make that orange a purple. And then like, I don't quite, like, I mean, that's, so like, the other thing is these are squigglies. Like, I think this is another one of those things like the cul-de-sac where like, I think it wants to be something else. I think we want to, you know, have some thought about what that is and what that activation is, but like, it's just, it's very squiggly. And so like, we need some development standards, but also like, I think flexibility as well, which I think is like the downside of the purple. Like, it's a little less flexible in what it allows. So I just
So, so here, here's, here's where I'm at. I like the idea of extending the purple to the freeway. It, it, that makes sense on both the south and the north side of 220th. However, I still think there's benefit to keeping the, the, the southern part of this focus area purple as well with the caveat that the type of development that you're going to see adjacent to 56 will most likely be different than what you're going to see further into that parcel if it's broken up or the fact that the church, if they're going to stay, they're not going to completely redevelop their property. And so we look at this right now as the zoning is like, oh my gosh, that's a lot of purple and we have to, if we're going to add some more, we got to take away this. I would think that we could, and again, maybe the bean counters need to get involved in this one. We could add the purple closer to the freeway, but keep the purple that we have right now unknowing that, that the type of development that would ever occur there isn't one, going to take up that whole parcel and two is really going to be probably focused on 56, or at least that's where we want to see the activation type of development is on 56. What's going to happen set back from that is going to be different. Unfortunately, right now, our colors are based off of the parcels as they exist today as opposed to most, how the development would actually occur.
Yeah, because when you look at the way the church is laid out on that property, right, we keep probably the
Can you put your mic on?
Yeah, so assuming the church doesn't completely redevelop itself, I think there's at most two parcels here and one of them is the north and the other is the south. And then like, there's a whole bunch of weird chopped up stuff in the middle facing 56. I think the, you know, for whatever, you know, if we've got a ceiling on what we can develop, I think the get we get from keeping that purple is not that high. But I think if, I know we talked about at some point, or maybe it was mentioned in passing, like some kind of allowance for in R2 on arterials, you can allow some like cafes or something. Is that something we've carried forward? I guess that's a zoning thing.
Yeah, let's not go there on land use and let's talk about that as we get to zoning. Because, yeah, I would say R2 is definitely not scripted right now to be commercial. It's scripted to be middle housing. And we have requirements for middle housing that we have to meet certain thresholds, so we got to be careful. Playing too loose with not meeting that just because that's state law, but I would say for this, I guess we're gonna propose to extend the purple and then you guys need to decide to keep the church purple or do you move it to R4? And we can figure out the requirements for commercial adjacent to 56 and all that in that overlay stuff as we talk about the stuff we just looked at. I don't think we need to go there. I think it's more of a, is it R4 or is it mixed?
So are there financial, like, so you were talking earlier about tax incentives? Is there a difference in tax incentives between R4 and mixed use that would be available to or are we limiting like their ability to even finance certain projects?
No, it's going to be the, no, it's going to be the, the type. And I would imagine there might be some incentives for, I mean, I know that there's more incentives for affordable housing even for the private development community that people are looking into right now. Churches might have more opportunity for that, right? Because it's very common for some of the religious institutions to develop, you know, both as their, you know, of what they do for their church. And then also I think there could be some additional programs for them as well. But regardless of that, um, I think, yeah, we, we know, it sounds like we have pretty much affirmative, at least in the House, I'm not sure, the commissioner's online, that we're going to extend that purple. But then it's like, do we want to keep A for the church purple? Or do we want to do R4 for the church property?
I come, I come back to the whole assemblage of reasonably developable lots and to me, keeping the church as purple
Okay.
makes the most sense.
Same here, I'm for A.
I don't see this chopping up. I think we're, we're not going to end up getting what we want.
What we want.
But I think, um, I think not chopping up, we also won't get what we want as well. I think the south side is best done, um, R4. I think that, um, you know, well, first off, if we have a ceiling, we kind of need to give and get some. I think there's also issues with, um, you know, possible like, um, over focusing of affordable housing if we aggressively up the, and zone this area without having incentives that we've kind of designed to, you know, make the city more of a partner in this. And I also think that there's all weird squigglies, um, on the 56th side that, um, make, giving a less flexible zoning designation make it a bit problematic for like the cul-de-sac to redevelop. So I think, uh, option B with the purple going north of Jack Long makes the most sense.
I would just, I guess the only other thing I'm going to add in, in favor is you have a bus, there is a bus stop right there. I believe on both sides of the street going east and west. We have a cloverleaf on ramp and so like in terms of density, we would be almost people would question why we wouldn't look at all of that whole zone being
So I think I think the logical reason for 220th is that you have, um, you know, made, 220th is a bit like a spine, right? And so 220th kind of makes sense as like a sort of an active street and we'll have to put some design into 220th east of the interstate, um, as for like a boulevard. But I think, um, like when you start, um, moving away from the 220th spine, it becomes a bit more like it's, it's kind of a lumpy bit right there. And so I think, uh, the bus stops on 220th are going away except for 130th and 119. So that is served by a half hourly bus. The other side is served by a single half hourly bus. At some point in the future, maybe it changed, but I think we need to have like 220th as kind of the spine. So I think it makes sense to start the development of 220th. And then that's sort of
But don't the buses come down 56th also?
They come down 56th and they come down to, they come down 66th. And so like, it's like not a super large, it's, it's not a very frequent bus. It's, it's every half hour, the same with a, sort of on the mirror image on 220th.
So it sounds like we have two for option A, one for option B. Um, what about the other commissioners?
I can go with A.
See, Act 31, you need another vote.
We just now need our two online commissioners to weigh in?
Um, I would go for option B.
Commissioner Landis?
Sorry, I got, got
Oops, muted himself. You're muted.
Oh, I think he
Oh, hey, sir, there I am.
Okay.
I was going with A.
Okay.
Well, I got four for A.
Okay.
That's option A plus the extension of the purple
Yes.
adjacent to freeway. Okay.
Okay.
Moving on, um, so no change here.
Oh, this one's easy.
Yeah, I, I think we can budget at least an hour to talk about this.
Do you want to take a, take a five? With
Yeah, makes sense.
Okay.
We'll go ahead and recess for five minutes.
Okay.
All right, we'll go ahead and call Meehan Macka into session.
All right, continuing on with the southwest quadrant, I think we just wanted to get a decision on option A versus B, so R2 versus R3. And some of the themes pre, that we heard earlier was density and flexibility and then that point about connectivity.
Yeah. Does connectivity change much? But I mean, based on the other discussions, it sounds like two, three and four are fairly similar and with this being surrounded by residential mixed use and town center reserve essentially.
Oh, that's what the blue is?
Yeah, it's like we're stepping down two zones.
Blue is
Blue is, um, what is now freeway tourist, which is going to be gateway mixed use, which is, you know, we talked about a little bit more, which is really more appropriate and, um, for how it's been developed. And I think, um, freeway tourist was before light rail and it was divided into districts. I think what we're trying to do is just make the zoning more consistent with where you could have mixed use, um, opportunities, but still have that commercial element to, you know, that area adjacent to I-5, which really does make sense, right?
Yeah.
So both, so I think we didn't change the boundaries of that. It's more, do you want some more density adjacent to the light rail station? So up the density from two to three, which was the conversation in that area.
So
In the box.
Option B is
Two maxes at four plexes.
Yeah. And then ups on that.
Three would allow four plexes?
It would allow four plexes, all the middle housing types essentially.
Just greater flexibility for increased densities.
Yeah, I think we want to make it as flexible as possible while we create a vision for this area. The likelihood of, as you said, the likelihood of an individual parcel, even an assemblage like being much more than that is relatively low and we need to do some work to change that.
I guess my only question is why did they, because I remember the discussion about the step down. That's why this looks the way it does. But why would they, yeah, I'm curious why we stepped down from mixed use into two rather than just what would logical be, you know, to step down into three. Was there capacity concerns?
It was just more like four was the minimum. So I think it was just that conversation of this is what the minimum is going to look like with, within that radius of light rail and do you want to keep it kind of at that minimum right there? Or do you want to step up? Was kind of the gist of the conversation, so. It kind of sounds like you guys want to step up to three.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think the main person who didn't was Isaac, but he's not here, so.
Oh, yeah, that's right. But he said he was, he would go with whatever we decided.
Yeah, I think, I don't want to put words in his mouth too, but I think he said he was almost debating whether to abstain from this conversations because he just, he was really clear about trying to stay above board
Right.
and make it obvious that he is, he lives here, he's directly affected by the decision. And so he's, he's very mindful of, uh, of, of not, uh, affowing any, any kind of ethics concerns, which I, which I appreciate.
So do we want to call a vote or is it pretty certain that we're going with option B?
B for me.
It sounds like you got at least a majority.
You're the fastest one today.
Yeah, well, just double check, or I, you know, we got the four, I just, I, I, I do want to make sure that we get the, our online commissioners, you know, at least opinions on the record here.
Thanks, um, I'm with option B.
Yep, same, I'm with option B as well.
Excellent.
Wow.
And I know we keep referring it to reserve, but at some point, the reserve is going to be downtown. I, I, I
It kind of is.
It, it's a pie in the sky dream, but I think the demand is going to be high enough where we're going to see that anyway. And who knows, maybe in five or 10 years, we're relooking at this neighborhood as
I think so.
this area as well, just because it's
Yeah.
There's only so much de, developable land on that side of the freeway, so it's
I like to call it the head and the tail though, so, you know, I'll put in for that as, as a zoning. But yeah, I think you're right. You know, there was a lot of consternation over that and then ultimately it was, hey, it's not really fair to downzone it. So it's not really a great zone to say town center reserve, but I think it got the job done, but I agree. I think we're gonna need to, you know, take a, take a relook at that, um, like we should and just say, hey, are we still hitting the mark or do we need to tweak that coming up? So I think we're there. And then we talked about, we're gonna ground floor active overlay with the zoning.
Yeah, I think we wanted to circle back on northeast quadrant real quick.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
So back to this, the, again, the, the hangup was on the cul-de-sacs.
Oh, yeah. Every other decision went so fast, but these cul-de-sacs.
It's pesky cul-de-sacs.
So option A, option B as presented or with some changes?
Well, I think the way the vote was is there was three for A and I, please correct me if I'm wrong, but the three for B was not as B is presented on the map, but B to include the, sort of the 44th and 228th, the L.
Right, yeah, activating the streets.
Yeah, so it was A or B modified to the L and also the
And the L in question is just the frontages, right?
Parcels that touch the streets.
Yep.
And maybe the cul-de-sac, I don't know.
It was the cul-de-sac too, going with purple on the south side of 228th.
Yep, okay.
So it's essentially the discrepancy between the upper cul-de-sac and those adjacent parcels that are off, that are off a main street right there, right? That just do that L shape right there.
Yep.
Quick question, all the other decisions we've made, how much have we broken this? Like, is that going to come into play? Are we that marginal?
Say that again.
Like, with all the other decisions we've made to upzone things, um, how broken is our EIS? Like, will upzoning these
No, I think we'd rather make a difference.
Oh, Mandy?
Mandy can speak.
I'm still here. I, I just had my camera on. No, I think we're fine. We're within the realm of the things that we've studied, yeah, so, yeah.
Personally, I like the idea of that L shape, but it's your decision.
Why do you like the idea of the L shape? I think, um, you can be a salesperson here. I would like to, I would like to hear, I would, I think, I think we've all said things.
Jonathan's used cars and zoning.
I mean, like, I, I would be interested to hear
I mean, just thinking about, uh, the changes we've made in terms of upzoning, I think we do need to sort of scale back some areas. So I think if we scale it back in this specific quadrant by maintaining this R2, um, I think that'll be a good approach.
So I guess, not trying to play devil's advocate on this one. It's more, it's more of a, a, a question in terms of development size. Is it feasible to see ground floor type development with just the parcels that are tagged on the L shape? So maybe a thin linear shape as opposed to most of the aggregation that we've seen has been more of a square-ish space. And that's because usually what it, what it allows, but with the, the, the depth of these lots on, you know, that are on the north side of 228th and on the, uh, uh, east side of, uh, 44th, just those parcels that touch, that would create the L, is that providing enough depth in those parcels to actually see a type of development that could have a sort of a ground floor activation retail component built into that? Or realistically, would we, you not be able to see that kind of development with just those parcels and they'd have to go at least one more parcel deep?
Well, I think maybe you would like to see that, but with the road configuration, I think it's going to be difficult anyways. I think you're going to probably end up with the requirement for ground floor activation on the L part and you're really it, it, this is also from a business perspective, like you can zone stuff, but from a business perspective, you're going to want to have visibility, um, to make commercial be successful, right? I'm not going to be putting commercial in my house in a residential zone. Besides my family coming over, I'm probably going to go broke. So I think realistically, the commercial is going to be in the L. So it's just a matter of do you want to zone all of it for the opportunity? Is it really Is it really gonna happen? Probably in the next 20 years, probably not. Could it potentially? Do you have the gist of what's probably gonna develop commercially with the L and the other cul-de-sac as purple? Probably so.
Well, I think in this case too, it'd be, you know, kind of the, similar to the other discussions that we have, where we're only looking at the commercial on those main thoroughfares. So even though, you know, the backside of that zoning is mixed use, we're not, we're not saying, oh, you gotta put mixed use there as well.
I agree, I agree. I mean, you're saying you're gonna put some mixed use there on that backside. Ultimately, you're opening up the opportunity and it's a little bit more aggressive. Is it probably gonna happen? Maybe, maybe not. The stuff that you're saying with the L shape, that's more likely it's gonna develop, right? But it's just a question of, do you open up the more opportunity with those, that other cul-de-sac? Or do you say, well, no, we'll keep it residential because it's likely not gonna develop within the next, at least within the next 10 years of this comp plan cycle? So either way, I don't think it's a wrong decision. I think it's just how you look at it.
Yeah, I mean, for me, you know, I kinda look back at sort of the development history of this area and just north of 228th and 44th, so you have sort of that dentist office and I think a birthing center like right there on the corner.
Right, yeah.
I remember when that was still a semi-family home. Just north of that, we have a fairly new, and I say new in terms, relative terms, it's probably about 10 or 15 years old now, new houses that were built there, which are probably not gonna go anywhere unfortunately. But it just, it just shows that because we didn't have the zoning in place at the time, that's, that's what we got. And it's kind of, has the potential to sort of kill anything else that happens around there. So I always keep examples like that in the back of my head. It's like if we don't, if we don't allow for the maximum possibility, lock that in now, we're gonna, we're gonna get the, the easiest common denominator, which is that, 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 that small infill development with, which then just eliminates any, any other potential.
Yeah.
So if we, if we have it zoned for maximum potential and it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen.
Right.
That's, it just stays the same as way, that's fine. But if we, if we sort of shoot ourselves in the foot from the get-go, then we, we've sort of eliminated that, that possibility, because, you know, it's, the idea that 44th would eventually become sort of this active strip. So not just at the nodes, eventually, you know, generationally, we could somehow connect, see the Cedar, I'll just call it the Cedar Plaza node with the, with Sorelli's. It's a bit of further stretch to try and have that also connect up north to, you know, the Safeway area. But, you know, to sort of, to grow that pedestrian friendly, commercial friendly, denser residential neighborhood friendly area, if, if we, if we don't allow for, you know, the facilitation of that activation, it's never gonna happen. And with that activation, it's like, how big of a lot size would be required to make that development happen? It's one thing to have the parcels fronting, just the one parcel fronting 44th or 228th zoned at that, but you're never gonna see that kind of development if it's only just that one parcel. If, say, the parcel's only 50 feet deep or 100 feet deep or, you know, what, what is that sort of magical number to get, you know, does it need to be 150 or does it need to be 200 feet deep? Because especially when we're talking about, you know, sort of ground floor activation that's commercial. I know it's a curse word in some people's minds, but parking, you're gonna have to provide some sort of structured parking as part of that development. So, okay, structured parking, great. Now what kind of floor plate are you talking about? How much, how much wiggle room are they gonna have until they just run out of room?
Or just parking.
Or just parking.
Period. Yeah, I mean, because you may not, you know, require as intense standards for parking in some of these mixed use neighborhood centers, but certainly you gotta have the room to park.
Yeah.
So.
Because there is no on-street parking in these neighborhoods and there's never gonna be on-street parking.
And that's where my head, and that's where my head keeps going when I look at these shapes. I just think like, you're gonna put a parking lot?
Yeah.
How would you have a commercial spot?
Yeah, it's true.
You know, a deep enough of a lot to make that feasible. It would be great if we could turn this into just a lockable town center neighborhood. We don't have to worry about that, but this area definitely is always gonna be a car.
And I think that's something that like, and I think that's something that like a proper visioning exercise could help. I guess maybe, you know, as we're talking, one question I have about the purple is, is it universally applied? Or is it more like the town center where each is like a special snowflake? And it has its own individual rules or nuances? Like, how much, like, are we complicating things versus making a simple code?
I, I think you, I think you don't wanna make it overly complex, because I think that's what we tried to do in the last town center is make it, if it's too complex, then people don't wanna develop because it's confusing. So I, I think just because it's not really a snowflake, I think what we're saying is make it purple or don't make it purple, then you can decide where you want the commercial to be required or in what instances. But I think you say, hey, you need a commercial component if you're adjacent to, you know, one of those 228th or 44th, but maybe there's a couple ways that you can do that commercial. Doesn't necessarily have to, but right on the street, it can, or maybe you can do it internal. Or I think that's what you can do with the zoning, so you can provide a couple of options. But, yeah, I think one way or the other, somebody's gonna have to say, yep, or they're gonna have to change their stance to say, we're gonna bust that out in all purple? Or I'm gonna change my purple vote to just the, the L shape. But I think you can, you can massage it with zoning a little bit as to the requirements.
So the one question I have, and try and believe me when I say I'm not trying to make this more complicated. When we're, you know, so we're talking, you know, we've been talking about the L shape, we've been just talking about the one parcel deep. If we're, if we're entertaining a one parcel deep option for the purple zoning, then would it be worth it to consider the, the west side of 44th as well? The, cause there's, looks like there's four or five parcels that are adjacent, are across from purple as it's currently zoned, but it's, it's yellow. Couldn't you make the same argument that those four, five, sorry, it's so small, I can't really, I think it's five parcels, that that could be purple as well?
You could, yeah.
I'd take, I'd take those over, you know, I'd take those over the cul-de-sacs. I mean, you know, it's starting to also look like density on arterials, which I think is a design error. But like, I think it's more functional there than sort of on the other side.
Or at least go back three or four parcels to where you kind of square that up a little bit more. I think he's, they're talking, this is what I think that strip right there.
Why are people in so many cul-de-sacs?
You're talking about those properties, right?
Yeah. Are you talking about the ones directly on the street or are you talking about the ones?
Well, they're.
On option B, the ones that are adjacent to the purple. Bordering, or at the north.
The northwest corner.
Oh, on 44th or 228th?
Oh.
Okay.
I thought you were.
Oh, yeah, yeah, makes sense.
No, previous meeting I talked about making those, those ones south of.
Oh, you were talking south, okay.
No, no, I was talking north, I just happened to be pointing south. So nor, so north of the subway, on that side of the street.
I see.
Yeah.
In, 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 you know, we have in this little block, so on the, we've been talking about the L. So the L on this would be purple on the east side of 44th, up to the edge of the square box, the highlighting area. But directly across the street on the west side of 44th, we have as yellow still. And to me, it would make, if we're, if we're making the east side.
You take those four parcels.
You might as well just make the west side purple as well.
And why not make all three corners their Ls?
Thank you.
So you're talking about on 228th on the north side, west of the subway, like making those three lots to.
No, 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 north of the subway.
Yeah, oh, so I mean, if you're making multiple Ls, you've got those like.
See where the cursor's pointing?
Right where the cursor is.
Everybody get their glasses on.
Yeah.
Wish I could annotate, I'm sorry.
Yep, so you're talking about those chair of Batista, right?
Yeah.
Okay, because you're making the other side, even with the L, you're making the same thing. Makes sense to make both of them.
Would it be two lots deep?
Why not just make all the?
Why not make all of them Ls?
All of them Ls.
In, in 30 years, when that's developed, you're going to an intersection that looks the same on all four corners.
That activation spreads out and.
Which I think what you might have been saying is the ones on the north side of 228th, west of, uh, west of the subway that go out to the street, kind of north of that other cul-de-sac.
Yeah, I mean, that, that becomes an actual neighborhood center in my mind. You know, in equal, equal shape, equal land use on all four corners, rather than the way it is today. You've got an empty lot, you've got a tiny little, you know, two-business.
Yeah.
Commercial spot, you've got a large grocery shopping center and then a, a small professional building, you know.
So would you change anything on the southwest side on option A?
I always thought on the southwest side that it would just make sense to have the purple extend down to what I believe is two, it's either 229, I think it's 229th.
That north south intersection right there?
Yeah, that next block. I mean, yeah, across the, you know, you could make the argument to have it mirror, the purple mirror, the purple extends south to mirror what it extend on the, on the east side of 44th. But the east side of 44th is a, you know, larger parcel, so.
Excuse me.
On the west side of 44th, it becomes, you know, small, smaller parcel. So it, it may be the case where you can't just do one parcel, you're gonna have to, you know, you know, extend that out, but.
Or at least you do the first two adjacent to 44th, like we did.
Two or three.
Yeah, two or three, because you can't really just do one. You'd have to at least do two, maybe three.
Because that, that could potentially open up the available, if people, you know, do wanna do something different with the property or sell to a developer who's interested, that could tie in then that whole block from what I'm assuming is 229th up to 228th.
Okay.
That whole block, because there were, you know, the development was already talking about taking out the old handy mart and the, the.
Right. That there's some mixed use.
That, that.
Yeah, I can't read.
Old apartment.
Yep.
Kind of L-shaped property.
Yep, yep, yep.
But that would just, you know, grab the next parcels to the south as well, and then now you have one.
So what are you proposing? How, how far back do you go there?
I would say probably at least three parcels. And if three's not enough and there's interest, then I guess they can, you know.
Okay.
Go through that process.
What's the plat there, like 60 feet wide by, I don't know, the rest of the town is 60 feet wide by 120 feet deep roughly?
Yeah, it, probably about roughly, that seems right. So do you do that on both sides of that street or just on the north side of that street?
Well, if you did it on both sides of the street, then it would make sense to carry it to the, the parcels that are at the very edge of that box as well.
Well, then I guess then you would have to extend it maybe. I think where that line is, is kind of, would be flush with Cedar Plaza, if you did it on just both sides of that street.
Yeah, yeah, that would make sense, because the, the.
Kind of try to square it off into some type of.
Yeah, I mean, there's just that little edge of, you know, next to Cedar Plaza that isn't zoned that way.
Yeah.
That's probably not gonna see, see any, any.
So you've, so you've added what would be six lots on the south side, the southwest side. You've added four lots on the northwest side adjacent to 44th potentially. And now you've got to say dogleg or full mill deal on the northeast side.
I, for me, if you, for shorthand, we'll just call it Ls on all the corners now. I would, I would feel a little bit more comfortable.
Okay.
Going that way as opposed to, you know, having that, especially that farthest northeast cul-de-sac there. But I, I, the question still remains, and it probably can't be answered at this meeting. Is the depths of those lots as a parcel, is that enough to still see the type of development that we're?
Well, I mean, you could open it.
I will say that.
Yeah, it's tight. I would say you probably wouldn't see redevelopment there. What you would see is people using those existing properties for a type of commercial use, which maybe be more a small service oriented. Hey, I'm a clinical psychologist and I open up a two-person or one-person shop right there. That, you know, I, there's maybe a service.
In, so in the light of thinking that way.
Yeah.
What if one of those corners, they didn't, yeah, what, what if one of those Ls was just an R4? And we kept at least three or at least the other two, the mixed use? So that we can accommodate a reasonable size for developing either R4 or a mixed use.
Okay, where would you put the R4 on that northeast?
I guess we can't because there's already kind of commercial in that area.
Right, you would have to do it.
Maybe it would be the southwest corner.
Well, the southwest corner, you're talking about 228th and 44th?
Yes.
Yeah, I do think that's had several, like, that was formerly commercial and I think is of a.
I wouldn't downzone that because I think it's gonna develop. I think that's probably the most developable of all of this.
Because it's empty today.
Yep, yep, yep. You'll see something happen there first.
Yeah, so in my head, 60 feet like is sort of the magic number for like an aisle of parking, right? And so if you have 120 feet, you get two aisles of parking. And then it's a little tight, but doable, because you have efficient circulation. And then more than that, like you start needing like 180 feet maybe kind of a minimum to start, you know, having, either, if you, if you were going to do something like structured parking, that's like three aisles of parking. And so this is like, you know, this, the lots facing the street are like two aisles, but then that lower corner looks like it's four aisles, like that's a pretty good zoning.
I was just trying to think of a compromise.
Right. So was it the L, L, L? Is the compromise, you add the four lots on the northwest? You add the additional six lots on the southwest? And you do the L shape on the northeast?
I'm just curious for on the, you're saying the six lots on the southwest, so that's just two lots deep?
Three lots deep.
Three lots deep. Oh, on either side of the street, but not, not, not the, the row of parks?
Yeah, just say you did at least so where you could develop adjacent to 44th.
These are six lots.
Cause I guess for context, I'm thinking of the birthing center building. And they do have, they have two rows of parking, and then they have.
They've got, I think they got parking behind the building.
Oh, is that right? There's like a lot up above.
I know the driveway goes up and, because the topographies there are really weird.
I'm just trying to use that for like context of how large of spaces a building is.
And there's multiple tenants in that building.
Yeah, the birthing, the birthing center, is that the one where you get ketamine also, like at the northeast side of, yeah? Okay.
How do you know that from this?
It's literally an alternative medicine.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, yes, okay, yeah, that, that's like that lot just to the north, northeast of 228th and 44th. They've, they've got a big sign advertising.
Okay.
But, uh, yeah, I think that, like, if you're looking at sort of like minimum developable, like, lot size for something other than townhouses, like, that seems.
In terms of that size, so that square we see there, as long as you can maintain that square on all four corners, which it looks like we're pretty much at in this in-between B and A, A and B. in this in-between B and A, A and B.
I think the thing to consider, though, with that building, it's strictly commercial though, as well, so.
Yeah, true.
It doesn't have a residential component, so the parking standards are.
Different.
Are gonna be different.
It's gonna be a lot of fun when we come to it.
And of course, I'm assuming that that building, because it's not as old as the other stuff around there, that it's, you know, there isn't, it isn't feasible that that would be redeveloped in the future as well, but it's late eighties, early nineties, I think that was built, so it's probably got a long time before that.
So. In terms of direction.
Where are we at, people?
Good luck.
Come on, so where are we at? Are we doglegging it and rounding it off with the additional properties on B, or are you a full mill deal in it? And you say jumbo size that, that.
I mean, A is sort of a dot, and B is sort of like an intersection, and I like the intersection idea. I think it's the most workable. I think it sets up for, like, a nice, like, reaching out into the neighborhoods in the future, like, as for, like, you know, setting up forty-fourth and two twenty-eighth being, like, streets instead of strods. And, like, also doesn't try to turn cul-de-sacs into five-over-twos as much. I think it's the most practical, and probably makes the best neighborhood.
Okay, I'm gonna throw a wrench in here, because I think right now we have that light purple as residential mixed use. I think what our intent is, is that it's really should be called neighborhood mixed use. And really, we're not trying to make you do residential necessarily. We're really trying to encourage commercial in some of these areas, so wouldn't you say that you could realistically do straight commercial in these areas, because that's really what we want, it's not necessarily residential? You can do residential with a commercial component, or you can do straight commercial in these neighborhood mixed-use areas.
I think that's.
Suggesting is like B as commercial.
I'm just saying, really what we should be calling it is neighborhood mixed use. And then in zoning, we can say, here's where commercial is required, and in these other areas, you could also do residential, and it really is a better description than residential mixed use. You got an affirmative, Mandy? Isn't that really what we wanted to do?
I mean, we, I guess we need to decide if that applies to all the purple, or just in a couple locations, and then we might need a different color, but yeah, I'm following what you're saying.
I think we can do it in an overlay and call this neighborhood mixed use, and then in zoning, we can do the overlay.
Yeah.
I think that's what we've talked about in my mind for a year and a half.
Yeah, I think it makes the zoning complicated, but in my mind, this is also kind of what we were doing as well, like, we're defining where the neighborhood centers are, and then in zoning.
Yep, and I, and I think we don't have to make it complicated. I think we just put an overlay where we're requiring that commercial. But really, that's what, when we've talked about these multimodal nodes of trying to build neighborhoods and having services there, and building around those where people could go to get a cup of coffee, where people could go to a mini mart, where people could get services in their neighborhood. Really, that's what we want to see there, isn't it? We want to see that little neighborhood commercial component.
Yeah.
And then the residential is bonus points, if you want to do that.
So can we do sort of, like, what you were talking about, so the full mill deal, A? We're calling it neighborhood commercial now, and we can clean that up with a zoning overlay?
I think so. I think we can, but I think I like your, your addition to the west side where we.
Oh, yeah, that's what I meant.
Move it up.
I see that you meant when you said full mill deal, was including all that.
Yeah, I think let's do that. Well, this is me, and I don't make the decision. But I would recommend we add those four lots up on the north side to square that up on forty-fourth. We add those six lots on the southwest side, and then we talk about what we require and what we don't require as far as commercial component in that, what we would call neighborhood mixed use. Does that kind of get us in a middle spot where we could all agree that that's kind of what we really want to do anyways?
Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
Okay.
So did we, did we do the Ls and then take out those cul-de-sacs? Just for my own clarity.
I don't think we have in option A. I guess you can, that could be, do you make it an L on that northeast side, or do you keep it that block, and we talk about what we do right there in zoning later on?
Oh, that's what I was gonna say, keep it as A plus the parcels to the north and the parcels to the south.
We kind of get more specific in zoning.
Yes.
Yeah, my, yeah, my concern about those cul-de-sacs is flexibility, but if you have a way to do it in zoning.
I think we do. I think we can talk about that in zoning, and we can get there where I think the planning commission can agree.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
Okay. We're all about reasonable here.
All right, cool.
That's our political platform, we're reasonable.
So did we just break our EIS by all these up zones?
I don't think so, because I think when we go back, really, we're gonna have areas that are gonna be residential, and we're gonna have areas that we're just wanting to make sure we have some of that neighborhood commercial. So I don't think we break the bank.
Okay, good.
Do you, Mandy, tell me that?
I don't think so, and remember, we did remove some purple.
We did, yeah.
So I think, I think we're good.
Where did we remove the purple?
I didn't know we were removing purple thirteen.
Well, we kind of did in some other actions of where.
Cul-de-sac, yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
I think, I think we're gonna be okay. I mean, it's, yeah, I think we can get to where we need on servicing what we talked about. We did upzone some stuff, but it's not like we got to alternative three that we couldn't serve it.
Right.
We kind of made a compromise there, so.
We're still in between alternatives two and three, which were studied.
Yep.
That's one threshold, and then another one is, we know the alternative three would be a challenge from a water and sewer perspective, so it's just gonna need to be studied. The level of capacity that's needed over time will just have to be studied and determined. You know, as far as what upgrades are needed, so I think we're okay.
I mean, we're gonna have to do another major update in ten years. And I know that our public works and engineering departments are fully aware in capital planning moving forward. We have got to do some capital projects, just point blank.
So, since we had sort of commissioner-by-commissioner votes on all the other sections, and we kind of cobble things together. I just want to make sure we're crossing all of our i's and dotting our t's here. So what we have now is an option, we'll call it new option A. Includes the parcels to the north and to the south, but instead of it, but we're, but these parcels will now be neighborhood commercial.
Neighborhood mixed use.
Neighborhood mixed use, sorry, sorry.
And then we can decide where the commercial in the zoning, the specific commercial component comes in. Not only here, but in some of those other areas, right? Because we'd be looking at that, and we can make those, you know, mixed-use center specific, like, what makes sense? And, you know, like, look at option A, what makes sense around what we did on the north? And those north properties, what makes sense around these south properties? And we can fine-tune it in these areas. What makes sense at St. Pius?
So, just, because it sounded like everybody was kind of, I just want to make sure I got everybody's vote on, or at least a count here, so, were you comfortable with this new option?
Just to clarify, we're painting more parcels purple and we'll handle it in zoning?
Yes.
Yes, I'm comfortable.
Okay. How about you?
Comfortable.
Comfortable.
Yes.
Okay, we've got three. Our online commissioners.
I'm all for it.
Okay. Four, five, okay. Excellent, it's all six, great, cool. Now, I guess we can move on to the, whatever the next slide was.
All right, yeah. So, as a next step, we'll bring forward that recommended land use map based on the discussion today, make sure it, it's complete and, and based on your input today at the next meeting, which is a public hearing. Terms, we did want to sort of summarize the DIS comments that we received. So we received six comments. One from the Master Builders Association of King and Snoomish County, and then another representing the West Plaza Ownership Group, which owns the commercial center just across the, across the street from City Hall. So in terms of MBACs, there's support for alternative two. West Plaza had comments specific to the Fifty-seventh Avenue West plan extension, which is part of the Town Center plan. There's another comment supporting alternative one, which again is the no action. A comment supporting alternative three, so that was the higher density exceeding the growth targets. Comment asking about accident and traffic studies on two thirty-sixth Street Southwest, and then on utility costs and plan for capital improvements funding. And then a comment recommending to take it slow regarding housing development, and what, and how housing impacts current residents. And so again, we are planning for the public hearing on September twenty-third. And then we'll be taking this to council beginning on September twelfth, so there'll be a, sort of a first go at reviewing the interim draft plan, not the recommended draft plan, since we need the planning commission public hearing for that. And then we'll be going through a series of meetings with council, so September twelfth, twenty-sixth. And we also have a meeting on October third, where the focus will be on the land use map recommended by planning commission. And then the sixteenth will be the public hearing with council.
And just to remind planning commission, we've been taking your work to the planning, or to the planning commission, to city council every two months, so this is not gonna be new to them. We just did a overview with them, was it two weeks ago?
August twenty-second.
Okay, I'm losing my dates anymore, but I mean, it's not new with, and that was the full intent, that you just don't get everything handed to you in your lap at the end, that you're seeing this stuff as you go through, much, which is what we tried to do with the C-Peg as well with you folks, is you're not seeing everything at the end, you're seeing it as it's getting crafted and talked about, so hopefully that will be three work sessions with a possible fourth if they need it, and a public hearing. So. And with room to, you know, we have to have adoption by the end of this year, but council had requested to try to get it done a little bit earlier with budget and all of that going on for filling their plate, so we were trying to get it to them in October, which was their request, so. If we move through, I think we'll be doing that. So, okay, good. I think we're, we're ready to to take this to public hearing on the twenty-third with you folks, if you're all comfortable with that.
Fantastic. I think we massaged the map. Is there anything else?
Next week, we'll be circulating the draft plan in the in-design format, so please stay tuned for that.
Pretty, pretty, with all the bells and whistles. And then we're also working to finalize the EIS, which will have the preferred alternative as alternative two, which is right along with what we're, what you guys are recommending to move forward to city council. And that's where we incorporate all the comments we've received, make sure we're adequately addressing them. And so we would tee up that final EIS with your recommendation on the comp plan to move forward to council for consideration. So that's kind of how that's gonna all roll together. And then, once that's done, we'll, we'll pick back up the middle housing and zoning for what the next nine months are, however long we have there, so.
Okay.
That sound good?
Sounds good.
Cool.
Sounds like we're at the end of agenda item number five. So we'll go ahead and move on to item number six. Want to say thank you to our online consultants for hanging tonight, so feel free to hang on the meeting if you want, but we're moving on to the next topic now, so.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Mandy.
Appreciate it.
All right, item number six, director's report.
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know, we just talked about it, that we're doing the first official work session with council of what you guys are putting forward on the twelfth, and to start that process with them. And then for the economic strategic plan, your recommendation, that will go to a work session this Thursday with council, and then they are slated to adopt that on the nineteenth for that work that you guys have done on that, so that's where that's moving. I would say department-wise, we've just really been trying to concentrate on getting you folks the information you need to get the comp plan taken care of, and also the environmental work and to address that. Sorry, we're leaning all the five-page comments from the realtors, but we just got it today. So just wanted to get that in your hands as soon as we possibly could, just so you had all the materials from any of the comments that we've received thus far. I think the good news is both from the environmental work and the comp plan, there hasn't been anything so far that has kind of shaken the rafters. We'll see what we get from the state, from the Department of Commerce, and their review, and then Puget Sound Regional Council as well. Hopefully, they were tracking with what we think that we should be doing. I think we, think we are doing the things that we should, but hopefully they concur, and there's no major things, and if there is, then we'll let you know that there's anything major outlined, but so far we're tracking along on that, so it's kind of where we are. What else is going on, Jonathan? Budget, software, launch, which has been less than spectacular. Even though we've prided ourselves in trying to front-end load this thing, I've decided that I hate software. I only like it when it works, and we're trying to make it work, but it's been a little bit painful, but I think we're getting it figured out.
You said budget software, so this isn't the new permitting?
No, it's the new permitting software, fully launched, yeah. We're also doing the budget process right now on the staff level that will be taken through council for the adoption for the next twenty-five, twenty-six budget, so as much as we tried to plan things out to happen at different points in time in our lives, everything's kind of like a magnet coinciding together. And so we're just trying to work through that, but we'll get there. I can't think of anything else major, just.
Can't think of anything else major that's happened since our last?
Oh, besides light rail opening. Yes, I think, you know what?
I don't mean to be sarcastic.
Actually, you know, there's, there's work to be done on that, but it's almost like, okay, that's in the review where of just getting it opened for revenue service, but as you guys are probably fully aware, there's still more work to be done on the different thirteen sites around the city. So that's, that's gonna be. So, um, that's, that's gonna be ongoing for about the next year and a half, depending on the particular improvements. But we're working on that, um, sometimes daily, um, and making sure that all the things that were part of the conditional use permit and all of the things that are supposed to be part of the station and the other sites are completed. So, just because we have revenue service, which is great, and people are using it, which is awesome, there's still some work to be done.
Um, so I got a couple of questions, so-
Yeah.
Apologies to anybody else who's got something as well. One, the, uh, I was at the opening ceremonies in Linwood. I know a couple of other planning commissioners were there as well. I was not able to attend the Mon, the Friday night events I was working. Um, I understand, I, I saw how many tents were set up there. It looked like it was jam-packed full of tents, but I didn't, I drove by it before any people were there, so-
Right.
Was, was staff there at all that night? Was it what you did?
Um, the, uh, Diversity, Inclusion and Equity Commission was there manning kind of the city booth and, but, uh, we, we weren't there, um, for that, and I did not go, um, attend that. By all indications, it sounded like it was fairly successful, that people thought it was a great event, it was put on by the chamber. There was some support by city to make sure that that went off, but did anybody attend here? Okay.
I did. Um, I think our, yes, I think ours was the best. I would actually like some more of those posters, I think, like-
Oh, cool, there's some more posters around.
Great. We, um, I think, you know, I know we could be a little biased, but I think we had the most fun with it, um, even though Linwood was a bit bigger. Um, and I also developed a much bigger appreciation for, like, the stuff around the station areas. Like, we had several, like, parties that were at different restaurants, kind of within walking distance of the train. Um, I don't think One Eighty-Fifth or Shoreline South has anything like that. And then, I wasn't able to stay at Linwood that long, um, but I do think, like, overall, we probably had the best scene.
Excellent. That's good to hear.
And I, and I've heard that, that people thought it was really fun. Um, we are, I mean, our station's closest, like, to different things, and I think as town center gets more developed, the proximity is pretty cool, because, you know, the hope is that it's really gonna reactivate town center, um, which I think, you know, that's what we've been planning for. So, it's cool. And I know, um, some folks at the chamber did a lot of work to make that event happen. Um, and we, Jonathan did some work on the special event permit, and it was like a wedding where you didn't see all the behind-the-scenes stuff, but for what the public saw, I think that it was successful. And that's really what it's all about, is, you know, making sure that the people that were, the folks that were down there had a good time, and it was fun, and people were excited.
Now, since the station's only been open a very short period of time, has city staff or anybody seen any issues with additional traffic generated now that there's a draw there? Because I know COVID, you know, people stopped using
Right, right.
the facility altogether, and we really hadn't recovered, uh, to pre-COVID levels. Um, has there been any kind of issues with congestion or traffic?
Not, not yet that I'm aware of, but, you know, definitely, I think that, um, we all know that the parking lots fall in the morning, and to me, we're gonna be addressing parking issues sooner than later, um, particularly when Candela Project breaks ground, and if we have a fourth terror station building, and just in general. I think it's just, you know, it's gonna be the nature of the beast of where there are some things that we're gonna have to address.
Do we know, is, is the garage at capacity as well, or just the-
I don't think the garage is. It seems like people are parking on the surface parking first from, I've went, like, three times and checked it out, because it's closest, which makes sense, it's closest to getting on the train.
Yeah.
And so, the surface parking's filling up, boom. There's still some capacity in, um, the parking structure that I've seen when I've been down there, but I think as we get more folks and as we get in the groove, I think that we're gonna be reaching capacity here at some, sometime.
It's, so when I've gone, I've used it a few times commuting and also midday, and I've noticed basically the first three floors are full. And it's really just the last turnaround and last upper deck that have spaces open.
Wow, okay.
Yeah, so it's, it's-
Definitely get more use again.
Yeah, I mean, you give it, give it six months of everyone used to it, and it'll probably be-
Or like the events, like you're saying, you went to the Seahawk game yesterday. So, you know, the beauty of-
Yeah.
You know, whether you take the bus, or whether you take white rail and, yeah, boop, get, you know, dropped off right there and-
I read that Sound Transit, though, released their plan, and I guess they're monitoring the stations.
Mm-hmm.
Once stations hit eighty percent capacity, I believe it is, they, they've already signed a contract with a, you know, with the Republic Parking or something like that
Uh-huh.
to start monitoring parking, and I think they're gonna implement a paid reservation system, and it sounds like you can reserve spots ahead of time.
Well, it'll get a little tricky with that garage, because the garage is community transit, so it's not Sound Transit. The surface lot, I think technically, is still community transit as well.
Interesting.
So, it's-
Yes.
Sound Transit Station is there, but it's all washed-out land that Community Transit manages.
Correct, cur- currently.
Currently.
Currently, is what I would emphasize. So, I think you're gonna see that change. And they do have to monitor parking, but that's gonna take action, I think, in some capacity for some type of parking program, um, for the residents. Even I, I keep thinking, like, at some point, when we show up for work, there may not be parking at the city parking lot. I mean-
That's not-
It's not too far off. It is not. And we all know that, you know, people are gonna park the closest that they can if those places are filled up. I mean, it's just logical.
They're gonna, they're gonna park here on the city's residential streets too, because they're not gonna wanna, the, the backlog to get out of that garage once there's that capacity.
Right, right.
Nobody wants to take forever to get out of that garage.
I mean, I think we all know what's coming, it's just gonna be at what point, yeah, so.
And kind of getting to, you know, how you used it for the Seahawk skin, what I've noticed, I had to do a couple of late nights, got stuck downtown, later than I wanted to be, and when I came back, you know, it's not super late, but beyond commuting hours, and I noticed coming home that that surface lot was still full.
Yeah.
It's, it's never been full, you know, past five, six o'clock, you know? And you come by there around seven, and you still see all those cars there. What that tells me is that people are using this for more than just work commuting.
Sure.
It's-
Yeah, which very wa-
Which is something that we said was gonna happen, so it's kind of, it's kind of great to actually say, oh, yeah, we were kind of right, that this-
Affordable, convenient.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, the, 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 what is it, the whole is the greater than the parts, or what, you know, it's just, it's just, yeah, it's, it's definitely getting more use and, like, you know, not, not just the game day traffic, but just, hey, we're gonna do something in the evening downtown, but we don't want to drive, so.
Yeah.
Interesting observation, because it is the by far most convenient parking right now, and when, before, it was the least convenient parking. So, like, if we're looking at the parking lot and we're seeing it full, you know, whether or not the parking actually is full, it does sort of present like a billboard saying, oh, look, the parking is full, or the parking is very active, which is like, I don't know, I don't know if I have an opinion one way or the other, it's just kind of an interesting effect of where the station is.
Do we know how many bike lockers there are?
I don't recall, and I should know that number, but-
I think eighteen?
Really, eighteen?
Because I, I use it, no.
There's a certain number they're, they're putting in-
Sorry. I looked it up the other day, it's sixteen, because I was looking at the capacity of the bike lockers at the station, and I think it was like, I looked on a Tuesday afternoon, and eleven of the sixteen lockers were empty.
Okay.
But I think there's capacity to, like, double that. So, they were gonna put in a certain number to open with the capacity to be doubled if it warranted, if they were getting utilized, then they would add additional. That's kind of how they got that permitted.
We were thinking the next time we use it, we're gonna use the bike locker.
Uh-huh.
Parking. Parked this time.
I'd say it's actually more convenient than parking the car, because you can see on your phone if there is capacity or not, and you can't really do that at the parking garage.
Okay.
They're looking to implement interesting things that would make our lives easier, capacity monitors for parking, I think that's-
Yeah, I think that would be awesome, right?
Cool.
So.
Anybody else have any questions for the director's report? Not hearing or seeing any? Okay, we'll move on to item number seven, miscellaneous business by call, planning commissioners. Anybody have any miscellaneous business? Any absences? Known or unknown? Calling out sick at the last second?
We squeak in all the time.
All right, going once, going twice. Sold, okay. So, that just leaves us, item number eight, adjourned. We'll go ahead and declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thanks, everyone. Yay!